Good evening, and welcome to this, the January 13th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. I ask that you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
With the roll calls show that all members of the City Council are present and accounted for. Let's see, a question for the City Attorney. Was there any action taken in closed session?
Mr. Mayor, no, there was not.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving on to the Citizens Forum, these are items that are not on the council agenda. The City Council can neither deliberate nor take action on these items. I ask that you please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And with that, we have Greg Scott, Ben Granholm, and Bruce Shore. Mr. Scott.
My condolences for the Los Angeles County Sheriff Officer Amber Lys family. Sheriff Lys was killed off duty by a vehicle after helping an elderly woman across the street yesterday. I do not know the circumstances, however, can we all slow down in our driving? Lys was a 41-year-old mother with two sons. Condolences also for the passing of Bob McKenzie. Bob and Donna McKenzie have done more for the homeless than anyone in Livermore. I speak on homelessness. I speak on homelessness in Livermore, the Tri-Valleys, and in Alameda County Supervisory District One. There are thousands of desperate, unsheltered homeless in District One, hundreds in the Tri-Valleys, and hundreds in Livermore. Yesterday, I attended the two-and-a-half-hour debate presentation of the four candidates for Alameda County Supervisor District One, Hernandez, Halbert, Wykowski, and Bacon. Dublin Mayor Halbert and Dublin Vice Mayor Hernandez both spoke about homelessness. My question for the Livermore electorate is, what is the city of Dublin doing and/or what has the city of Dublin done in regard to homelessness? $494,000 of state money went to Alameda County that was granted to the city of Livermore for crisis intervention services for all of the Tri-Valleys. What part did the city of Dublin and the city of Pleasanton want in managing this money? Just about none. Foisted off on the city of Livermore like Dublin and Pleasanton do with much of the facets of their respective homeless situations. Electorate of Livermore, this is not fair to you, nor any of the citizens of Livermore. Electorate of Livermore, you now have a say in this in your vote for Alameda County Supervisor District One. What is the real estate and developer money that Hernandez, Halbert, and Wykowski received for their campaigns? Are you going to say that the real estate and developer profiteering has no causality of the homeless situation? How can we say this? Elderly and low-income and others are being forced out of their rentals. Wake up, Livermore. Governor Newsom has pushed $1.4 billion for the homeless situation in California. We have spent billions of dollars in the last two years only for us to watch the homeless problem expand and accelerate. $1.4 billion, that is one, four, and eight zeros to the right of that. To put it in perspective, last Thursday, January 9th, the Federal Reserve Bank Corporation did a liquidity injection of over $83 billion. That is a one-day liquidity injection of around 60 times what California, with a $3 trillion economy, roughly the size of the economy of all of Great Britain, is going to allot to homelessness for a year. We somehow think we are going to make progress with $1.4 billion on homelessness against tens of billions to hundreds of billions of dollars in the financialization of mortgage-backed securities that are collateral for repos, that is, repurchase agreements for hedge funds and others in the $100 trillion shadow banking system. We are not on the pathways to solving overall homelessness. We do not need an Alameda County supervisor who does little more than give empty words and platitudes in regard to homelessness. Livermore, you are strong and smart, and your electorate has a voice in this.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. We have Ben Granholm, Bruce Shore, Evan Branning.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Ben Granholm. I'm with the Western Propane Gas Association. First off, just thank you for taking the time to listen to us tonight. WBGA has been engaging with a number of city councils across the state regarding local reach codes and decarbonization efforts. And first, I'd like to make it very clear that WPGA is very supportive of these decarbonization efforts. However, we do believe that residents should have access to diverse energy options. Over the last couple of months, we've seen millions of Californians left in the dark and the cold due to the public safety power shut-offs. These occurrences, which are expected to continue for at least the next 10 years, are a prime example as to why relying on a single energy source is unacceptably risky and accentuates the need for both energy diversity and resiliency, two things that residents will not receive from relying solely on electric. Whereas following the shut-offs, we heard from countless individuals who were able to power their homes, stay warm, and ensure that essential life-sustaining equipment was not turned off during the shut-offs because their homes were also plumbed with propane. Propane can provide a clean, uninterrupted energy at a cheaper rate than electricity, and the propane industry is very proud of the role that we play in providing an affordable, clean, non-methane energy for low-income communities, as well as a vital backup power for solar-powered homes when battery power is low. Disincentivizing propane as a complementary power to solar has unintended consequences to make solar-powered homes more expensive and less reliable when power generation is not at peak levels. We also have concerns with the cost-effectiveness study that a lot of local cities are using in the development of these reach codes. The data that we have seen in the study thus far does not appear to calculate the true cost of plumbing a house with propane, as there is very little and no substantial difference between plumbing a house with propane and building with electric, especially once you factor in the cost of the energy. So when looking towards the future, we hope, and our industry is investing heavily in renewable propane, derived from sustainable sources like beef, tallow, or vegetable oil, we hope that regulators take a more holistic view of the complementary role that propane plays alongside other decarbonization efforts and renewable sources such as solar, wind, and other renewable fuels. We believe that clean energy solutions should not have to compete against one another when they can often complement each other. And this point is illuminated by Dr. Ernest Moniz, who is a physicist and former U.S. Energy Secretary under the Obama administration. His nonprofit produced a report for how to decarbonize California's economy. And the gist of the report is that all low-carbon energy solutions must be deployed today, which includes low-carbon gaseous fuels such as renewable propane. Thank you for your time, and we hope to work with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granholm. Bruce Shore, Evan Branning, Doug Mann.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, today I speak as a supportive witness for the defense of our City Council. During the long process of deciding on the restructuring of our downtown, I attended several planning sessions. These were all of them open to anyone who wished to attend and participate. At these, I learned from our city staff of various constraints that have to be considered for any construction within our city. I heard professionals of city planning explain the many interlocking details that must be considered for even the smallest of developments. Nothing stands alone. At the conclusion of our public participation, our elected council members were tasked with putting together a plan for Livermore that would be practical and would incorporate within the acknowledged constraints the different preferences of us residents. This they did. I am pleased that my inputs and those of my friends and acquaintances were all considered, even if not used. I am particularly pleased that there will be new parking for patrons of the First Street Ale House, which does business every afternoon and every evening, not just with special performances. I acknowledge that in the end, with any democratic process, it is not possible for all participants to have all of their wishes. I have seen that our City Council has done an excellent job with their very difficult task, and I shall certainly vote in March to support them and support a fine future for our downtown Livermore. Thank you.
Mr. Shore, thank you very much. And thank you all. You're paying attention. I appreciate that. Evan Branning, is my mic on? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I guess I'm just going deaf. Evan Branning, Doug Mann, Lanning Thompson.
All right. Good evening, council. Good evening, staff, and thank you, everyone in attendance. I'm here speaking before you just to thank you today. So I want to thank the City Council, and I want to thank the staff on all of their hard work that they have put in towards the beautiful downtown that we have. I've come before you many times, and I've spoken out for my pleasure on what is happening. But I do want to say, very specifically, I've come before you lots of times in a lot of different roles, and as most of you may know, I'm very involved in politics. I have done things on the state level, I've done things on the county level, I've done things locally, I've been involved at all levels of politics in this state. I've worked on numerous different campaigns, I've worked on numerous different issues. I've come before you asking for things before, I've come to other members and other bodies looking for things to help our city grow and to help our city. I've always kept Livermore in mind whenever I've been doing any of these tasks. And I want to say that in all of the different outreach, in all of the processes I've been through, in all of the different events that I've gone to, there has never, in my entire life, been an outreach process so complete. There is never, in anything I have ever seen, has a city, a county, the state, anyone gone to such lengths to get so much input from so many people. I've heard many times this myth, that you didn't listen. When we hear from so many people, when we talk to so many different people, someone will always find something that wasn't heard. I had things that I have stood in front of you and asked for. There were parts of this downtown plan that I was looking to see changed. And when I came before you, you sat through a very deliberative process. You sat through a long deliberative process in which you reached out to everyone, gave everyone the opportunity to speak up. And again, I want to reiterate, I have never, in my many years, working on many, many issues, seen a process so inclusive. And I want to thank you for that outreach. I want to thank you for all you've done. I don't want to ask to everyone who is looking at this and saying that they weren't heard to take a moment and know that I'm a local resident, I own my home, I'm also a teacher, and I look around, and my fellow teachers, the other people who work with us, who help the city, are struggling. The downtown plan we have will provide some housing for them. It also provides open space for me and my family, provides a hotel for when my parents visit, or when other dignitaries come to town. It'll provide new retail for when I want to go to Blacksmith Square. The amenities it provides are wonderful. While we're having this fight, it is costing the city money, it is taking away time and resources, and this fight is over very small things. The same amenities will go down either way. Regardless of what we have, we can look at a city that we would be proud of, we should be willing to listen to the city and the experts and the staff who spent so much time and so much work listening to us, we should listen to them. So I want to thank you all for all your hard work and dedication. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Branning. Doug Mann, Lanning Thompson.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about RFPs. And the reason I'm here to talk about our RFPs is because I would like to see that when you release RFPs, you're really getting responses from the best companies for whatever goods or services you're looking to receive as a result of the RFPs. As a company who receives RFPs from government agencies, I can tell you the process that we go through when we receive one. We look at it, and we ask ourselves a few questions. How long is this going to take to put together? What are the odds of us getting it? But there's a third thing. We wonder if they're actually sincere. A lot of times, you may know this, a lot of times when RFPs go out, it's really a matter of process. It's a step that has to be gone through because you need more than one bid to get something. Even if you've really, you know, the staff responsible for, you know, procuring the services, they may actually know who they want to go with, and it may be a perfectly good company, but they have to send it out to bid. And there have been times when we haven't been aware of this. I've also been on the other end of that sort of situation, where we had a government agency that wanted to go with us. We knew they wanted to go with us, we were perfect for it, but they had to send it out for bid. They got 60 responses. We got the job. Now, many times when we have just applied to these things that come in sort of blindly, if we go through the trouble of putting together the RFP, we don't get it, and then we never hear from them, and we don't really know why. So it's kind of this mystery thing. And I would just like to encourage you to reach out and maybe have your staff reach out to make sure that your process of putting these things together is designed to get the best results that you can get, so that you really, you know, come up with something that works. I got one from the city not too long ago. It was actually, it was an RFI, and I, you know, it requests information on how to make the RFP better. So I called and, you know, spoke to the representative. I thought it was a pretty good process. When the RFP finally came out, I didn't really see any of the information that I put into it, applied to it. And so when I called again to say, you know, I'd like to discuss this, the answer was, "Well, now the RFP's gone out, we can't discuss this with anybody who's received the RFP." And one specific, so the specific suggestion I'd like to make is a policy suggestion. Flip that completely around. If, as soon as you send out RFPs, encourage everybody to talk to somebody on staff if they have any questions, because you might be able to refine what you're asking for with information that'll help you get somebody who's actually going to do a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Lanning Thompson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. I'm Lanning Thompson, and my personal views are informed by being an officer of the boards of both Interfaith Housing and Tri-Valley Haven. While I am an ardent advocate for more affordable housing to address the regional crisis, I know there is no way such housing can be built fast enough to make a dent in the worsening homeless situation. So I would once again urge the council to create a safe, well-regulated commons area as an emergency shelter for our homeless citizens. This commons should have space for the larger RVs that cannot participate in our safe parking program, as well as toilets, showers, and a heated and air-conditioned space where residents dwelling in tents could find shelter from the elements and also receive needed services and supervision. These facilities could be located in trailers or portable buildings. For the next two years, such a commons could be located right at the end of Pacific Avenue, where Interfaith Housing and Satellite Affordable Housing Associates have a negotiating agreement with the city to construct about 140 apartments for needy seniors. Construction on that project will likely not start until 2022, so the land could be used on a temporary basis as a site for commons. It's adjacent to the headquarters of Tri-Valley Haven, which could provide supervision and many needed services. Please consider this concept. It's needed ASAP. We've already had a lot of freezing weather. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Okay, that's all the cards that I have for the Citizens Forum. So I'm going to close the Citizens Forum and move on to the consent calendar. Some cards for the consent calendar. Does anyone on the council wish to pull any item for consideration or for discussion?
Can you just have a comment?
Okay, a comment on...
403.
403?
Pull on the...
Sure, if you wanted to make a comment on that. Okay, okay, so why don't you go... I do have a card on 4.03 as well. So with that, why don't you make your comment first, and then your comment, and then we'll... Oh, okay, all right.
Right, so item 4.03 is the resolution authorizing execution of a professional services agreement to update the climate action plan. And I just wanted to call that out, because this is a really important area that we're looking at. Livermore has a culture of community involvement. This item is in line with that. We've heard in public comment about outreach. This is, the council will be, is being, the council will be asked to appoint an advisory committee made up of community stakeholders, facilitate public participation progress, a process that's action-oriented, the building from a common community vision, and encouraging sustained involvement. I just wanted to pull that out, because there's a lot of people here tonight. I want everybody here to participate. Climate action, climate's a thing, it's happening. That's all.
And with that, we have someone who wants to be involved. I have a card for Van Rainey to speak.
So just two things. One, I'd like to follow Greg's lead in offering condolences to Ed Mainland and his family. She's the senior or subcommittee chair for the Sierra Club on Energy Related Matters. The second thing I'd like to, you know, comment on is in seeking further clarification of just how the public is going to be involved with the process in advance of any recommendations made by the consultant. So if I could get some idea of what the advisory committee is going to look like and how we're intending to construct outreach, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rainey. Mr. Spence?
So as mentioned by Councilmember Monroe, we will be asking the council to appoint a subcommittee. We'll do outreach, both on the web and through other sources, to invite people to apply for that. We would love to get a cross-section of folks. And then we'll also be involved in doing a variety of community outreach components. We'll have public meetings, we'll be at farmers' markets and other events, we'll have a web presence. We'll try to be as complete and inclusive as possible. We may go and talk to children in some of the schools, we'll do a variety of things. And if the council has particular ideas, or if the public does, we'd be happy to hear them.
So would that be under advisory bodies on the website, where people could sign up for that?
Sign-up hasn't started yet, but we'll be working with the clerk's office to put something on the website soon.
Okay, so someone could contact the city clerk's office and gain more information...
Yes.
...on how to be part of the process. Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilmember Warner?
Yeah, on 4.05, I just want to note that the two bids were within 5K, and it's, I just want to say, it's unfortunate the winning bid wasn't from Livermore, but preference would be to, of course, always try and buy locally if we could.
Their sales tax is lower. So, okay, with that, any other questions or discussions on consent calendar? Do I have a motion?
You have a motion.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Coomer.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to 5.01. This is the hearing to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval on November 5th of the Livermore Wine Country Inn Site Plan and Design Review. So with that, I have a few cards here. I'd like to call for the staff report. We have Cam Purawal and Steve Stewart, who has a name tag of Andy Ross.
Could I, could I ask something?
Oh, certainly.
So I just want to make a comment and then maybe ask the city attorney or city staff to make a comment. So I just want to point out that it's my understanding that this is, this event is somewhat unusual. I think I've been on, it's my ninth year on the council, and we don't do this very often. And it's different than a normal council proceeding, in which most of the time, I'll say, we deal with legislative matters, but in this case, we're much more constrained. And I was just, in advance of we, starting here, we just get a few comments from either the attorney or city staff. Just explain to everybody what this process is and how it is different than what we normally go through.
Certainly. I think I can take the lead on that. And staff will cover this in their presentation. There's a slide, at least one slide dedicated to the council's role today. Now, you're right, council generally has several hats it wears, and one role is acting as a legislative body, creating new laws and new policies that are implemented by staff and applied to projects that come before them. That is not your role here today, though. Your role here today is to review a decision that applied those rules and policies to a project. That decision was made by our planning commission. So in that role, you're acting your quasi-judicial capacity. So your role here today is to determine whether the planning commission, one, committed any error when it actually reviewed the project and applied those rules and policies; two, whether it abused its discretion in doing that; or, three, whether there's anything, any decision that was made by the planning commission that lacked adequate foundation in the administrative record before it. So that is your role essentially here today.
Clarifying? Okay, clarification?
And just before we get started, I want to introduce Cam Purawal to you all. He is an assistant planner with the Planning Division, been here a little over a year. And he'll start off the staff presentation, and our applicant also has a presentation.
Okay, thank you. Cam Purawal.
Good evening, Mayor Mershon, and members of the City Council. The item for your consideration tonight is an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision to approve the Livermore Valley Wine Country Inn. The red square is the project site. Royal Road is located to the east of the project site. Wetmore Road is located to the south, and Ruby Hill is located further out to the west. And we can see the Greenbelt Vineyard Buffer further to the south. The South Livermore Valley has been an active grape-growing and wine-producing region since the 1880s. In response to threats of suburban sprawl continuing to move east from what is now Ruby Hill, the city of Livermore and Alameda County adopted policies to revitalize the Wine Country Inn, or to revitalize the Wine Country back to its early-century prominence. The city adopted the South Livermore Valley Specific Plan in 1997. The specific plan's vision then and now is to support the long-term viability of the Wine Country. The project site is approximately three acres at the corner of Hanson and a Royal Road. The site is surrounded by vineyards and a regional trail along a Royal Road to the east of the project site. The proposal is to develop the site with a 30-room Wine Country Inn with a caretaker's unit. The project also includes a 77-seat restaurant, 61 paid parking spaces, and 19 overflow parking In November, the Planning Commission held a public hearing and unanimously approved the project. They added two modifications. First, to add an island in the driveway to discourage left-hand turns onto Hanson Road. Second, to locate the property address on a Royal Road subject to clearance by fire and emergency services. The Livermore Pleasanton Fire Department has accepted the a Royal Road address. Friends of South Livermore, an unincorporated association, filed an appeal of the Planning Commission's decision on November 19th. When reviewing an appeal, the City Council exercises its quasi-judicial authority to determine whether the Planning Commission erred or abused its discretion when approving the project. The scope of the City Council's review should be limited to the project presented to the Planning Commission in terms of the site plan design review and conditional use permit application. The Planning Commission's decision did not involve a change in use. Therefore, existing allowable uses are beyond the scope of review for the appeal. The appeal letter identifies the following items in question. The staff report provides detailed responses for each item. I won't read through this list, but we'll look at these aspects in the following slides. Aesthetics, visual significance, scenic corridor, and vistas are addressed in the South Livermore Valley Specific Plan Environmental Impact Report. The environmental impact report concludes that development of the site with a Wine Country Inn is less than significant impact in all aspects. The specific plan also mentions that only Wetmore Road, Marina Avenue, Wentee Street, and the Concanon Boulevard extension to be designated as scenic corridors. The proposed design is Spanish Mediterranean eclectic and is consistent with the architectural styles in the South Livermore neighborhoods. The project complies with the specific plan architectural standards and guidelines for commercial buildings. The exact language from the specific plan is shown in the lower left-hand corner of this slide. You can see the Spanish eclectic is a permitted style and is found in each of the specific plans. plan's subareas. The project architect will provide more details in his presentation. The maximum floor area permitted by the specific plan and zoning is 25%. The proposed floor area ratio is 22%. The inn also conforms to the 35-feet maximum height limit and setbacks in the specific plan. Again, you'll note the text "right out of the specific plan and zoning" on the left-hand corner of the slide. Based on the lighting plan, light from the site would not spill over past the median on Hanson Road. Conditions of approval have been added to ensure compliance with the specific plan lighting standards. The specific plan requires a 100-foot agricultural buffer along a Royal Road, and the zoning prescribes a 50-foot setback from Hanson Road. The overflow parking within the planted buffer is similar to other Wine Country uses, such as Purple Orchid, Wentee, Concanon, and Campo de Bocchi. The project requires 61-paid parking spaces. The proposal is for 61 parking spaces and 19 overflow spaces for a total of 80 parking spaces. The specific plan allows up to 100 seats for the restaurant. The project proposes 77 indoor seats for the restaurant. There appears to be additional outdoor dining seats on the site plan. As a condition of approval, the restaurant shall be limited to 77 indoor and outdoor seats. If additional seats are proposed, the project shall provide additional parking spaces at a ratio of one space per three seats. Hanson Road has the design capacity to handle 5,000 daily trips. Currently, Hanson Road handles 600 daily trips. The August 19, 2019 traffic study estimates the project would add 344 daily trips. 69 of the 344 daily trips would be on Hanson Road. A Royal Road has the capacity to handle 20,000 daily trips. Currently, a Royal Road handles 6,000 daily trips. The project will add 275 daily trips to a Royal Road. In response to some of the neighborhood's concerns regarding traffic, the Planning Commission added a condition of approval to add a no-left-turn median at the inn's driveway to help reduce the number of trips on Hanson Road. The access from Hanson Road is consistent with the specific plan, zoning, and development agreement that requires access from Hanson Road. In addition, the lower speeds on Hanson Road provide for efficient and safe access to the inn. Last summer, the Board of Directors for the Livermore Area Recreation Park District reviewed the proposal and concluded that the entrance through the property should remain on Hanson Road, and the project should avoid impacting the regional trail located to the east of the project site. The minutes from this meeting are included in the packet as Attachment 15. Please note the text taken right out of the zoning in the bottom of the left-hand corner. Other comments state that the caretaker's unit should pay developer impact and agricultural mitigation fees, and that the inn will generate revenue from a cell tower. The caretaker's unit is integrated within the inn building and is allowed only to support the primary commercial use of the property. The caretaker's unit ensures onsite management is available to address any issues, and that conditions of approval also prohibit the use of the caretaker's residence as a short-term rental. The project will be assessed all associated development impact fees, similar to other commercial projects within the city. A cell tower is not included as part of the proposed project and would require review and approval of a separate application. In conclusion, the Planning Commission found that the project is consistent with the general plan, specific plan, development agreement, and zoning. The commission and staff recommend the council adopt a resolution certifying the environmental document and denying the appeal. The project architect has a presentation for you, and staff is available for questions now or following the applicant's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for staff at this point? Vice Mayor Carling?
So thanks for that. You mentioned the trips, the 69 daily trips on Hanson, right?
Yes, correct.
So was that before or after you added the no-left-turn proviso out of the site?
That was before the Planning Commission added that condition.
So do you know what the impact is, insisting on right turn only out of the site?
It would reduce...
I know, I figured that, but do you know what the number might be?
Yes, it would reduce approximately 39 trips heading west on Hanson Road.
So it would go from 69 to 39?
Thirty, 39 reduction, so 30.
Okay, 69 to 30.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, okay. So half.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions? Okay, so now we have the presentation by the applicant.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Lance Cronell, principal, owner, and architect for SDG Architects. Thank you for having this hearing tonight, and thank you to city staff, Cam in particular, for helping us through this process. It's been quite a journey and quite a learning curve for us, and we're happy to present this to you tonight and answer any questions you might have. As Cam mentioned, and I'll float through some of the redundancy in my presentation that he gave, it really summarized the conditions of kind of where we are at this point. We worked very tightly with city staff even before we applied for this application to make sure that, one, we understood the specific plan and the vision for city council in terms of their vision for city, for the South Livermore Valley and that Wine Region, and that we're working together with all toes pointed in the same direction. So our first step was to understand the specific plan and work with city staff and the departments to understand really the impact and more so the vision for this type of development. One of the things that's really unique about this development is that this is not a chain hotel. This is a mom-and-pop boutique 30-room hotel proposed in front of you today in the South Livermore Region. In doing that, what we were able to do, as Cam mentioned, was to adhere to all of the different requirements within the specific plan and also agree to all the conditions of approval that the city staff had placed upon this project. Up to 30 rooms, we comply. Restaurant, up to 100 seats, we comply. Caretaker's unit, we comply with conditional use permit. FAR at 0.25, we comply. All of our setbacks are in compliance. Our architectural presence, per the South Livermore specific plan, is in compliance. We maintain the vineyard on Arroyo, and we're in compliance. And the Planning Commission unanimously supported and approved this project. Some of the things that we did in addition to understanding the specific plan and designing this was to reach out to the community. We had two community outreach meetings. One was voluntary by the owner and the applicant, and one was hosted by the city staff. And there was some great feedback that was given to us during that time. One was the massing, which we adhered to in subsequent revisions to the design. The other was the overflow parking. We certainly wanted to make sure that any impacts to the parking were maintained on the site and didn't bleed over to the neighborhood, and that was very important to us. The lighting standards and the cutoffs, we wanted, again, make sure that our lighting was just secure to our site and did not bleed over. So we worked with Cam and city staff to make sure that our lighting cutoffs were such that we were just impacting our site. The right-in, right-out lamb chop, as it were, for the ingress and egress, the site access, was something that we agreed to because we too are concerned with the traffic and the trips and the access to the site. We want to be good neighbors. Again, this is a Livermore resident who's applying for this application. She lives here already, and she's going to be living here and taking care of the unit. And she wants to be as good a neighbor as humanly possible. The other thing that was really important, and Cam had mentioned of it, was that the readdressing of this Livermore Inn to the Arroyo address. We felt that that was very important for the technology that's in place, for wayfinding devices and things like ways and maps, to make sure that we had as little impact on the neighboring traffic as possible. And so a lot of these things here are a result of those conversations and developments. Access onto Hanson Road, main entrance plaza here, main entrance into the lobby space, outdoor plaza area. This is the parking in front, parking on the side. This here is the restaurant area. The occupant is undetermined at this point. We do not have an occupant for that restaurant as of now. We have a decorative parking element here in the middle. We have overflow parking here and surrounded by vineyards. This is Arroyo Street, and this is Hanson. It's surrounded by the guest units, which have beautiful views out to the west and out to the south, per the specific plan. It was mandated that we maintain those views, and so we gave those views to the guests. Some of the things that were really front and center from the architectural standpoint is to make this look as good as we want it to for the South Livermore Valley. This is a Wine Region, so it needed to look stately. It needed to look like something worthy of a winery presence. And even though it isn't a winery itself, it certainly has a winery presence. It has an estate feel, but yet it's humble. It's only two stories. We were able to fit it within the 35-foot height limit, again, keeping within all the constraints of the South Livermore specific plan. One of the elements that we did put on here is we made somewhat of a tower element to create a landmark. This is on the corner of Arroyo and Hanson, so as you're going through the South Livermore Valley, this is one of the marquises and one of the landmark elements you'll be able to see from that corner. One of the interesting things about this site is that it actually sits down about eight feet from Arroyo, so it does not sit very proud on the site. It actually sits very, very humbly on the site. So from the Arroyo side, it looks like a one-story building. As you go down into Hanson, then the two-story massing reveals itself. And you can see this here. This is the Hanson elevation here, and here's a faux winery door here. And then here is the restaurant tower itself. So as you enter off Arroyo, this is what you see, and then you make an immediate left or a right for parking. On this side, what you see here is all the expansive windows to take advantage of the views out to the south. This is the southerly elevation. So these are covered decks and balconies for guests to enjoy the views. This is the rear elevation, so this is the westerly elevation. So this is the back of the hotel. This is the two-story space that's in the front. And then again, guest suites on either side, taking advantage of the westerly views and the sunsets over the vineyards. These are the courtyard views here, very reminiscent of the Spanish Mediterranean eclectic style. And again, the front elevation here. And so one of the things that's really, I want to impress upon the city council, is that we're in a unique opportunity. We have a husband and a wife with a young family who are pulling their resources together and having a dream to build a hotel in an area that is designed by right to have a hotel. They're not selling it to Marriott, they're not selling it to Hilton, they're going to own and operate it themselves. And so I think Livermore is in a great and a unique situation to have such an opportunity in front of them. From a winegrower's perspective, there are very few hotels in this area. A lot of times, what I hear in Livermore is that the wineries are great, but you can only see them from your car window because there's no place to sleep. And so this really fulfills and executes the vision that was placed in the general plan 23 years ago. And it's my great honor and great privilege to be able to design a space like this for the City of Livermore. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Vice Mayor Carling?
Thanks very much. Could you point out where the caretaker unit is on one of those slides, please?
Sure. This elevation here shows a portion of it on this side.
I'm looking at it from Arroyo, is that right?
Yeah, this is the Arroyo elevation. So this is the caretaker. Just for orientation, this is the restaurant, and this is the main entry.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Yep.
Councilmember Warner?
Well, I have a question for staff. I appreciate your presentation, but you mentioned things like who's going to own it, et cetera. Is that relevant to the kind of decision we're making today as to whether this complies with the rules?
No, you're looking at the action the Planning Commission took and the request of the appeal this evening.
So I just want to say, again, I appreciate the presentation, but for those that might follow, we really are talking about rules and whether it complies or not. So to the extent we stay focused on that, I think is what we're about here.
Okay, any other comments or clarification at this point? Okay, in that case, I would like to ask for the appellant to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, city council and city staff. Thank you for taking our appeal.
Certainly.
We paid for it. In any case, my name's Peter Young, and I filed an appeal for Friends of South Livermore. I was going to direct your attention to an email sent in from our attorney, Mark Wolf, today with the main points to cover our appeal. And so I've got about 10 minutes, so let me maybe not read the whole one, but pick out relevant points. There are four points. The first one is the violation of specific plan setback distant requirements. It revolves around the South Livermore Valley Specific Plan Policy 4-7, which says, quote, "Building setbacks for commercial uses shall be 100 feet from road frontages, except for Commercial Site 3A. All setback areas shall be planted with vineyards or orchards." Policy 4-7 thus contains two mandatory elements: 100-foot setbacks from all frontages for all commercial uses in the planned area, and in addition, maintenance of orchards and vines in those setback areas. The project as proposed includes only 50-foot setback from Hanson Way in violation of Policy 4-7. And the staff report seeks to justify this deviation by citing a notation appearing in the margin of a site diagram appearing later in the SLVSP, which states, quote, "Required setback agricultural buffer 100 feet from a Royal Road," end quote. And that's on page 12-11 of the SLVSP. The staff report suggests that because this single marginal notation does not mention 100-foot setbacks from Hanson Road, the SLVSP must therefore not require them, notwithstanding the plain language of Policy 4-7 requiring such setbacks from all frontages for all commercial uses. Regardless, any ambiguity resulting from marginal notation silence must, as a matter of law, be resolved by reference to the plain language of Policy 4-7, a principal policy of the SLVSP. Policy 4-7's plain language governs. While a planned unit development permit issued for the site in 2001 and modified thereafter, the PUD 01-001 states that only a 50-foot setback is required from Hanson Road, the SLVSP itself was never amended or modified to reflect this change, despite numerous subsequent post-adding amendments that would have provided an opportunity to do so. The PUD's 50-foot setback provision for Hanson Road also directly conflicts with the Policy 4-7 of the SLVSP and is thus likewise inoperative as a matter of law. And the reference there is to Leisure Communications versus City of Walnut Creek. And you can read the letter on that. And so we were asking the city council to approve our appeal and deny it based on not being compliant with that setback requirement. In addition, Point 2, it's a violation of the setback requirements by allowing overflow parking in an agricultural setback area. The Policy 4-7 in the SLVSP also requires that the setbacks be maintained entirely in agricultural use, planted either with orchards or vines, with a preference for vines. in agricultural use, planted either with orchards or vines, with a preference for vines. This is on page 4-35 of the SLVSP. This requirement stems from, quote, "The importance of this sub area as an entrance to South Livermore Valley," end quote, "and the need to ensure that commercial development, quote, 'does not compromise the rural agricultural character of the South Valley,' end quote." This is on page 4-34 of the SLVSP. In addition, the project's initial study mitigated negative declaration states that maintaining a 100-foot agricultural buffer off Arroyo Road will serve to reduce or avoid any otherwise potentially significant impacts to visual resources in this designated scenic The project violates this aspect of policy 4-7 as well, compounding the violation of the 100-foot setback requirement for all frontages, including Hanson Road, discussed above. The project proposes to remove two rows' existing vines from the 100-foot buffer area off Arroyo Road to provide for overflow parking area. This is impermissible under the SLVSP, which allows for overflow parkings only at wineries and olive presses, not at the wine country inn specified for parcel 5D2. Introduction of overflow parking not only directly conflicts with policy 4-7 and entirely violates the minimum negative declarations claim that maintaining the buffer would avoid or mitigate visual resource impacts in the scenic corridor. Third point is violation of land use restrictions in the specific plan and the PUD allowing separate bar uses. The PUD does govern the uses permissible on parcel 5D2, and the PUD states that, quote, "Only those commercial uses identified in the specific plan will be permitted." And this is on page two of the PUD. The SLVSP correspondingly allows only for a restaurant on the site in addition to the inn. The Livermore Municipal Code defines restaurant as a separate and distinct use from a pub, that is a bar. And the proposed plan has, in addition to the restaurant space, has a proposed bar in the lobby area, and we believe that's not allowed under the South Livermore Plan. One of the issues on this project has been parking. In reading the reports, the number of seats in the restaurants have varied from 90 to 77, and a lot of that has to do with the building size and how much room is left remaining for permanent parking. And so, I think, based on our comments, the city staff is starting to recognize our concern, and so they've proposed a new condition of approval, condition five, limiting combined indoor and outdoor seating to 77 seats total, but allows the applicant to add additional seats so long as it provides one additional paid parking space for every three new seats added, which is the standard thing. The problem is, is that if you look at the plan, there's no more room to put permanent parking unless you go into the setback areas. So we propose that the council should amend condition five to categorically cap indoor and outdoor combined seating at 77. If the applicant plans to add additional seats in the future, it will need to either redesign the project footprint or obtain appropriate separate land use entitlements. So those are the main points that, or the main policy points that we believe the project needs to be redesigned and resubmitted to address. We have additional issues which have been touched on here, which in the public comment area, people will talk in more detail about. So thank you very much.
Any questions for Mr. Young? Thank you very much. I have to say, thank you so much. I love the signs. Thank you so much for that. I do appreciate that.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any further questions for the appellant or for the applicant? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. I'll ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you substantially agree with somebody, say, you know what, I agree with what he said, and we don't have to go through the whole thing. So I want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak tonight. We've got about 33 cards, so that's where we are. If you could just bring your card up for the camera is there, we can add that to the stack. Thank you. Okay, so Brad Tucker, Brandy Addington, and Ian O'Reilly.
O'Leary.
Pardon me?
O'Leary.
I'm sorry, O'Leary. It says O'Leary, right. I would have gotten that the second time.
You did.
And guy with the first card tonight, yeah, you got here early.
Oh, I turned it in.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm back. Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, I only prepared two minutes, so I'll talk fast and read it twice, if that's okay.
Certainly.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you about the proposed, in the Livermore Valley Wine Country Inn. I'd like to just share a few excerpts, because I want to sort of address not the legality of it, but the spirit of the legality of it as well. So here's just a few excerpts from the city of Livermore's own website. Founded in 1869, Livermore is California's oldest wine region, framed by award-winning wineries, farmlands, and ranches that mirror the valley's western heritage. Livermore's arts, culture, western heritage, and vibrant wine industry provide a unique blend to this special community. Historic downtown Livermore is enjoying Renaissance reestablishing the downtown as the city's preeminent shopping, dining, entertainment, and cultural district. Speaking as somebody that grew up in this valley from 1974 on, honestly, I cannot think of a more perfect facility than this proposed inn. Seems to me that it fits in perfectly with both the culture and the image of this wonderful community. It's reflective of the rustic beauty of the valley. It, as has been previously stated, serves a vital necessity for additional hotel spaces in the area. And it does it in a way that's both charming and classy. I believe it will help to enhance the reputation of Livermore as a renowned destination for wine, culture, arts, and entertainment. Respectfully and bluntly, if this project does not fit Livermore's vision, I submit to you that no project would. This facility serves the best interest of the city of Livermore, and I hope that you all will agree that the Livermore Valley Wine Country Inn will serve an infinitely better purpose for the local area around it and this great city than simply some gas station or strip mall that might otherwise find its way built into this heretofore vacant lot. I, along with many others, proudly support this project, and we respectfully ask for your approval and the denial of this motion. Thank you again for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Brandy Addington, Ian O'Leary, and Donna Caban.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Brandy Addington, and I'm here representing the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association. This project meets all the criteria in the South Livermore Valley specific plan for this parcel. It is what we have wanted here for almost two decades. It will provide lodging for visitors, meeting space for businesses, and another restaurant for our residents. We are in dire need of exceptional boutique lodging experiences, such as this one, to gain international recognition as a wine destination and to help boost our local wine growers and our greater economy. Livermore Valley Wine Country has long been known as a world-class wine region, but has faced challenges in getting connoisseurs and luxury consumers to our wine country due to the absence of adequate wine country lodging. This boutique hotel will go a long way in securing those visits and presenting this region as a world-class luxury wine destination. The time is now to approve this project, and with Michelle at the helm exercising her conscientious attitude towards preserving what is important to our past while enhancing what we have to offer in the present gives us excitement for our future as a world-class wine destination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Addington. Ian O'Leary, Donna Caban, Teri Loggess.
Good evening, Mayor, council, staff. I stand before, my name is Ian O'Leary. I'm on the board, the directors of the Livermore Valley Wine Growers Association. I also am a small business owner. I own Spirited Packaging, supporting the wine industry and the Livermore Valley wine growers. If I heard the city attorney correctly earlier, you are acting as judge and jury tonight in terms of process. And from what I watched of the presentation that went forth, and I've been here before many times regarding the hotel, and I watched as a speaker earlier talked about the process that you guys went through, that I've never seen before in such detail, depth, and thoroughness. So I want to thank you for that, and I'm confident that the staff has taken that same process expertise into this process as well. I want to compliment Michelle and her husband for having the large grapes to put forward to go through this process and be scrutinized each step of the way. If I heard again, the Livermore Valley, the South Livermore Valley Plan specifically states that it is to, you know, allowed some development, which was needed, people wanted, but was specifically stated as a charter to develop and promote the Livermore Valley wine growers industry. I don't get it. It's zoned correctly, the aesthetics is there, the parking is there, you've gone through all of the processes. It seems to me like it's one of those situations where people find a great home value under an airport and then bitch about the noise. That's what it feels like to me. The point here is, and I compliment both of the two prior speakers to me, I agree with both of them, Brandy's point of a destination. I do business in all of the wine regions within California. I have fought with my group and the friends of the wine growers on the need for destinations. You know, I hope we all vote yes on March 3rd for the hotel and that we take this project forward and put some boutique lodging in place so that this region can flourish. We're at a crossroads. It is tough. You know, I do, there's 50-ish wineries out here, most of them are small businesses, working their butts off day in and day out. And these people drive by these vineyards and think, what a great place I live, and don't recognize what it takes to be successful here. We need your help as a community. Step up. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary, thank you very much. Donna Caban, Teri Loggess, Jim Golseth.
Good evening, Donna Caban, member of Friends of South Livermore, 17-year resident of Los Olivos. We are not opposed to an inn, we are opposed to the current design. Uphold the appeal. Deny the project's entitlements until plans conform to city codes and specific plans. Deny the CUP, require a full EIR. First, eliminate the 18-square-foot conference room, not a permitted use. The use of an inn as a conference and event center is not allowed. Why would 30 overnight guests need a conference room that holds 100 people? Two, move the entrance to a royal road. Hanson Road, only 24 feet wide, has no bicycle lanes and no room for future bicycle lanes. It's too narrow to handle 40% of the traffic traveling to the inn, crossing three rural residential neighborhoods. Reclassifying Hanson as a medium collector's street is unacceptable. It was built as a rural collector's street according to the South Livermore Valley specific plan. Number three, require 100-foot setbacks on Hanson Road and Arroyo Road and the maintenance of orchards or vines in setbacks as mandated. No parking, permanent or overflow, is allowed in setbacks. Four, eliminate wine bars, not a permitted use. For public safety, require all alcohol sales at the restaurant. Stop at 10:00 PM as mandated at all microbreweries and wineries in South Livermore. Five, eliminate the addition of first-floor decks and a resident to the project that exceed far ratios. The first-floor decks are enclosed on three sides and have a roof, so they must be counted in the total build-out. Calling the permanent resident a caretaker's unit does not exempt the resident's square footage from build-out totals. Change condition 13. Require all mature trees removed for construction be replaced on-site as close as possible to urban trees. A donation to the Urban Forest Fund instead of trees on-site is not an acceptable alternative. For public safety, permanent parking stalls must be increased to 90. Overflow on gravel is not allowed at a wine country inn. Amend condition five. The future addition of restaurant seats violates municipal code parking requirements. Finally, I would just like to say uphold the appeal. Deny the project entitlements as they now are written and require a full EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caban. Teri Loggess, Jim Golseth, Bruce McKinley.
Mr. Mayor, is this correct? Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, at the risk of being long-winded, I want to have fun with this speech. Keeping that in mind, I will begin by saying, here we are seated before the Livermore City Council, being televised, debating the matter of the Livermore Valley Wine Country Inn. I am reminded of Andy Warhol's droll witticism, "In the future, everybody will be world-famous for 15 minutes." This remark is perhaps his most well-known quip, along with "Art is what you can get away with." However, it could very well be that a distinguished Swedish curator Pontus Holton actually coined the phrase, but no one has ever heard of him, and everyone has heard of Andy Warhol. In 1980, Warhol even admitted to never saying it. There is evidence that it may have been said by artist Larry Rivers, who knew Andy Warhol in the 1960s. In any case, its attribution is disputed. For me, this illustrates the point that things we think are true are often a figment of our imagination. There are those among us who think they are against Michelle Boss's Livermore Valley Wine Country Inn. In actuality, it could very well be that they will fall in love with the lovely, beautifully designed building's ambiance, its upscale restaurant, and well-appointed accommodations. It could be that they will find themselves pleased by the carbon footprint reduction that this venue would accomplish and will eventually forget that they were ever opposed to the building in the first place. Wouldn't that be the ultimate irony? I will reiterate to the Livermore City Council what I stated to the Livermore Planning Commission. The South Livermore Valley Plan Area Plan was approved by the Alameda County Board of Supervisors and adopted by the city of Livermore in 1993, following five years of deliberations and extensive study. Thus, the time to contest the plan and mount formal opposition to the proposal was more than three decades ago. That clock is no longer ticking. As I said in my last speech to the Planning Commission, let's all come together, endeavor to support each other, and not get mired in provincialism. Change is inevitable. Otherwise, we'd still all be riding around town in our horses and buggies. We'd continue to rely on our homeland lines with their answering machines when we stepped out to run errands. We would not seek higher education and online degrees on our laptop computers in the comfort of our homes to avoid commutes with our electric cars. We would not be reading books entitled "How to Break Up With Your Phone" on small digital devices. To recap, this is a great project. It will help establish the South Livermore Valley as a destination locale. This building will help promote the Livermore Valley Wine Country, period. Local wineries are struggling, and the Livermore Valley Wine Country Inn will be a big boost to local vinners as well as the greater local economy. Thank you.
And in the words of Yogi Vera, I never said half the things I said. Thank you, Ms. Loggess. Jim Golseth, Bruce McKinley, John Nunes.
Good evening, I'm Jim Golseth. I'm a local businessman. I live in Pleasanton, but I have offices in Pleasanton and Livermore. And on behalf of the local business community of the Tri-Valley, I just want to remind you that this is a project we've been waiting for a long time. And I have my doubts that you're going to find a better project that will come into this space and fit in so well. So I think it's a great project, the right project, it's the right place, and I urge you to... you to reject the appeal, and let's see if we can get this thing built as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce McKinley, John Noons, Van Rainey.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff. I'm standing to support the Wine Country Inn and urge you to vote down this appeal. I would speak in a way that hasn't spoken about the urgency of time to get this done. There is pressure afoot to build other buildings and other types of structures in vacant land, and I would really appreciate it if we built a building of this quality and this support of ours city instead of the alternatives that are coming from external pressures. Thank you.
Thank you. John Noons, Van Rainey, Dennis Elchison.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is John Noons, and I live near the project site on Sellers Drive. I'm here this evening to request the City Council uphold the appeal of the project and refer it back to the Planning Department for the appropriate changes to conform to the South Livermore Valley-specific plan. We live here, too, and we're not opposing the project. We would just like some cooperation with the applicant to be able to work with us here in this community where we've lived for a long time. In addition to that, speaking about the Wine Growers Association, there may not be all this viticulture in the South Livermore Valley if all those houses that paid pass-through costs of about $80,000 to be reserved for the easement, so you could put viticulture there. The specific plan establishes road setbacks for commercial uses to be—
Hold the time, please. Hold the time. Thank you. We've got an agreement here. If you agree with someone, raise your hand. This way, we can get through the process more quickly. I don't want anybody to feel intimidated, so I would ask that no one boos. Similarly, so that equal time, I ask that no one applauds so we can get through more quickly. If you agree with the speaker, please raise your hands, and we can get through this more quickly. Thank you very—or your science. Thank you. I do appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you. Please resume, Mr. Noons.
The specific plan establishes road setbacks for commercial uses to be 100 feet from road frontages, except for a commercial site near Concanon Boulevard. That's the only exception. Nonetheless, the project has a 50-foot setback from Hanson Road. Although the planned unit development permit issued in 2001 states a 50-foot setback for commercial uses on Hanson Road, the specific plan was never amended to account for that conflict, and there was plenty of time to be able to go ahead and make those amendments to account for it. The planned unit development is subordinate to the city's general plan and the incorporated specific plan. Consequently, the 100-foot agricultural setback on Hanson Road must be maintained and the project's entitlements postponed until this inconsistency is remedied. The project also includes removing two to three rows of planted vineyards on a Royal Road to generate additional overflow parking for the indoor restaurant. Overflow parking is only permissible in the specific plan for wineries and olive presses, not hotels and restaurants. The 100-foot agricultural setback on a Royal Road and Hanson Roads must be maintained and the overflow parking area eliminated from the project. The project only lists 61 paved parking stalls. This is grossly underestimated. The project's plan provides seating for 106 food and beverage patrons. You can go ahead and look at the design that the applicant went ahead and proposed and count the seats in there. But only 77 seats are accounted for in the report. This creates an unmistakable shortage of at least seven paved parking stalls. Moreover, there is no accommodation for parking stalls for the indoor restaurant staff, which the applicant acknowledges to be 10 to 15. Where's the staff going to park? There's no accommodation for that. They're going to park on Hanson Road. The project goes beyond the permitted uses and incorporates a bar, which is separate from the restaurant, a swimming pool at the applicant's residence for private use, and a 2,000-square-foot conference center for food service. Let me just show you the applicant's marketing brochure, and in there regarding the conference center, it says, "The operation corporation will have multiple revenue streams, three business meetings, and retreat space rental." That's not for the hotel guests to stay in the hotel. This is to go ahead and solicit outside businesses to come in and use the conference rooms.
Thank you, Mr. Noons. Thank you. And we did get that brochure in our materials. Thank you. Van Rainey, Dennis Elchison, and Sonia and Mia Cole. Mr. Rainey.
City Council, Mayor. Basically, in your quasi-judicial capacity, I'd like to offer a amicus brief and be brief about it. I'm assuming that with all the time that the applicant spent in submitting and discussing this particular plan with staff, that they've offered a plan that meets all of the requirements of the general plan in the South Livermore Valley-specific plan. And any of these objections that have been listed, I'm assuming they haven't been offered in evidence prior to that decision. So if the decision was made based upon the careful deliberations of the staff as submitted by the applicant, I don't see how you can make any other decision but to support this plan, and I would greatly appreciate it if you did.
Thank you, Mr. Rainey. Dennis Elchison, Sonia and Mia Cole, Ann Young.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members and Staff. I'm Dennis Elchison, 3061 Talinga Drive. I generally support the Wine Country Inn, but I'm concerned that the parking is inadequate and that unsafe and illegal parking will occur along Hanson Road and other nearby residential streets. The proposed plan, as we've heard before, calls for 61 onsite paved parking places. It also calls for 19 unpaved overflow parking places. However, according to the South Livermore Valley-specific plan, overflow parking is only permitted at wineries and olive presses, as we've heard. That is in the plan, and not at a Wine Country Inn. The applicant proposes to remove some grapevines to make space for overflow parking. Removing existing grapevines is not permitted by the SLVSP. That leaves the 61 permitted parking places. That's not nearly enough parking. According to building standards and fire codes, the 30-room inn requires 30 parking places itself, and the 77-seat restaurant requires another 25 places. About 15 more parking places will be needed for staff, and the applicant wants two places for her residence. That's a total of 72 parking places, which is 11 fewer than the 61 permitted. But what makes the parking totally inadequate are the meetings and other events that the applicant wants to hold at the inn. She wants to hold business and financial seminars, training classes, counseling sessions, and so on. These are not permitted uses under the SLVSP. The proposed conference room is about 1,800 square feet, I believe, that holds anywhere from 80 to 100 people. The applicant claims that all the people who will attend her meetings will stay at the inn. That's not very likely. I don't think that most people will book a room just to attend a meeting. And even if they wanted to, there probably won't be space for them because most of the rooms will already be occupied by other guests. So where are these meetinggoers going to park? Most meetinggoers will drive to the inn, try to park. There won't be enough parking places, so the overflow onto Hanson and our neighborhood streets. We need about 40 to 50 additional parking places. The solution to this dilemma is to eliminate the large central courtyard that the building wraps around. The courtyard is a nice feature, but there's just not enough room for it on that site. An L-shaped building—or C-shaped building—would allow for adequate parking and the required 100-foot planted setbacks, while still providing ample space for at least 30 guest rooms in a large restaurant. So I urge the council to uphold our appeal and to direct the applicant to modify the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elchison. Sonia and Mia Cole.
And a friend.
And a friend. Good evening. Welcome to the Livermore City Council meeting.
Hello, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Sonia Cole. This is my daughter Mia and our friend. And we just met, so we're not sure of his name. We—
We got her letter, by the way.
Oh, you did?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
We live on Hanson Road. We moved there recent—from San Jose about nine months ago, and in looking at the homes in the area, our realtor did let us know that there would be an inn at that corner. We are not opposed to the hotel. We are concerned about three things. One is the entrance on Hanson. We live on Hanson Road. The traffic maps currently do direct traffic onto Hanson. I did have a chance to speak with the head of engineering at Apple regarding traffic maps. It wasn't too hard to reach him, since I'm married to him. And if there's anything—he said if there was—he lives on Hanson, the inn is—the hotel will be on our street. If there's anything he could do to direct traffic elsewhere, he would do it. But he said it's really under the control of two things. One is the city's address, the actual address of the location, and having that address be changed to Royal, which I think has already been done, is a huge help. The other thing is what the owner will do and how she registers herself on Google and how she places maps on her own website. So we're urging—we're asking for the entrance to be moved away from Hanson, but at the same time, thank you for changing the address to Royal, and we please do hope that the applicant will do whatever she can to direct traffic from Wetmore to Royal to her hotel and not through Hanson, which is a very, very narrow, windy road, no bike lane, and filled with families with kids on that street. Our other concern is the inadequate parking. I think quite a bit has been said about that already, but in our neighborhood, parking is only permitted on our driveways and in pullouts. We're not even allowed to park anywhere we like in the neighborhood. So to have hotel guests coming—or restaurant guests coming to the inn and not having a place to park, they are going to park illegally in our neighborhood, which we're concerned about. The other concern is the possibility of events happening at the hotel. I don't know if that's a confirmed thing, but the possibility of events being in that meeting space at the hotel is of concern to us. I used to be an event planner. I actually don't really mind if events are happening at the hotel, but what I have a huge problem with is 100 people coming and going at the same time with that traffic, again, hitting Hanson, which is where our family lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Ann Young, Peter Young, Nancy Bankhead.
I should really let my husband go first.
Okay. Peter Young, followed by Ann Young, followed by Nancy Bankhead.
He just disappeared.
We're accommodating up here, if nothing else.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to make some more general comments than the ones I did during the—during our appeal session. First of all, we are here tonight because, in short, the South Livermore Plan has been modified to fit the project rather than the project being designed to fit the plan. The staff report to the Planning Commission is inconsistent and erroneous. To list a few examples that are detailed in my submitted letter, it says that 61 permanent parking spaces are conservative, yet they have planned an overflow parking lot. The overflow lot is not only not allowed by the SLVSP, but is in a location reserved as a 100-foot planted setback from a Royal Road, as stated in the SLVSP, the EIR, the PUD, and the mitigated negative declaration. The SLVSP requires 100-foot planted setback from Hanson Road, and while the staff report uses the PUD number of 50 feet, measuring from the project drawing, it shows only a 30-foot setback. The project includes a bar separate from the restaurant and an 1,800-square-foot conference room, neither which is permitted use under the SLVSP. Other concerns have been dismissed by incomplete reports or selective arguments. We've been told repeatedly that we knew what we were getting into when we bought our homes because there was always a 30-room hotel planned for Site 5D2. That is only true if the SLVSP is respected, and for this project, it is not. Whole sections of the SLVSP on which we were supposed to form our perceptions of what would be built have been disregarded under the argument that they were descriptive rather than prescriptive. The SOV policies and Livermore Development Code requirements regarding setbacks, parking, and permitted uses have been ignored. This violates both the letter and the spirit of the SLVSP. One could say that the city and the original landowners knew what they were getting into when they sold the land for our homes and the surrounding open space. At that point, we became stakeholders in the SLVSP, and it would be unreasonable to expect us to passively accept a project that conflicts with basic policies of the SLVSP and the LDC. At the August 21st, 2012 meeting of the Planning Commission, which considered a proposed winery for the 5D1 parcel, the Chair, Harriet Cole, stated, quote, "We have an obligation to the people who bought homes. When people buy homes in Livermore, we have an obligation to our neighborhoods. A city is its neighborhoods and its businesses. There is a check-and-balance system at work, specifically in the South Valley Plan, but also in the city as a whole, and we're supposed to work it through when there are conflicts," end quote. We have an expectation that the city will provide the process—will provide due process and consider the comments of the neighborhood. From the errors in the staff report, it is clear the Planning Commission did not provide due diligence in reviewing the neighborhood comments or the Planning Department documents. To conclude, I'm presenting a petition which shows why disapproval of the proposed project. There are 191 signatures from 120 out of 177 residences, or over two-thirds of all residences near the hotel.
Can you give this to the city clerk, please? Now we have Ann Young, followed by Nancy Bankhead and Kendall Smith.
Okay. Hi, I'm Ann Young, a friend of South Livermore and a longtime resident. I would like to talk about excess traffic that will be diverted through our neighborhood with the proposal you're considering tonight. The traffic study done for this hotel is really incomplete. It was done in the middle of summer on a weekday, when many of the residents were on vacation, and it only looked at two areas, the top of Hanson and two excess streets that get little activity. The study also states that additional traffic at the intersection of Hanson and Royal won't have any significant impact. This isn't true. Both runners and cyclists use Hanson as an alternative route to Wetmore Road. They use the middle of the road because Hanson is too narrow for bike lanes. Increased traffic on Hanson will be a safety hazard to both cyclists and runners. But the major problem with this study is that it did not look at the bottom of Hanson. With the destination hotel in mind, traffic from the west was not factored into their report. Traffic from the west will be drawn straight up Hanson. The bottom of Hanson is less than 100 feet from the junction of 84 and Homes. Driving up Hanson to the hotel is faster, more convenient, and has an established traffic pattern. Giving a false address on a Royal and losing signage to redirect traffic is confusing and ineffective. Western traffic drawn into our neighborhood at the bottom of Hanson will include people coming off 84, people coming from Pleasanton using homes, Livermore residents themselves using homes. We have 12 larger neighborhoods off of homes in the west. People coming to the hotel from the west will be commuters, guests, people attending business meetings, people attending parties, employees, and diners who unfortunately will exceed the unenforceable 77 cap on restaurant seats because they'll spill out to other areas with food and drink. The original South Livermore Plan states that Hanson is a rural residential street to be kept at low volume and low speed from Impruneta Court to Wetmore, but the traffic study states that Hanson Road can carry from 5,000 to 20,000 cars a day. This amount of traffic is equal to the heavily trafficked thoroughfares of a Royal Wetmore Homes, and these roads are certainly not residential streets. Hanson cannot carry 5,000 to 20,000 cars a day safely, especially with readily available alcohol in the mix. The development of the hotel has not really—the developers, excuse me, have not really mitigated the neighbors' concerns about these things, even though they have been repeatedly requested. That is why we followed this appeal, to move access to a Royal Road for real, to observe and maintain the 100-foot setbacks on Hanson and a Royal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Nancy Bankhead, Kendall Smith, John Marion.
Hi. You guys have done it again. Livermore brings out the emotion in everybody. There are strong feelings on both sides. There's two sides of this story, and both of them have a right. We have John—we have an arbitrator here in town. It should go to arbitration. You guys shouldn't be the bad guys again. Why don't we—why don't you set up an arbitration for the neighbors and the owner of the inn and the architect to work it out so that everybody comes out happy and it's done faster than if it goes to court? I just—the emotion it brings out—you can hear it in people's voices, how much people care about this. And to go to court and waste money, I don't think that's right. But Livermore, we love our town, and we are emotional about it. So that's my idea. Arbitration.
Thank you, Ms. Bankhead. Kendall Smith, John Marion, Sylvia Ramos-Hance.
Hi, my name's Kendall—
Hi, my name's Kendall Smith. I live on Hanson Road, so I understand what's going on in my neighborhood. I moved to Hanson Road five years ago, and one of the things that I was impressed with that the city had the foresight to do was to actually develop a South Livermore Valley specific plan. It has some wonderful elements in it, and one of the things that comes out of that is its plan was to preserve the rural and agriculture character of the South Livermore Valley. It also is, was designed to promote the wine tourism industry as well, and it was also designed to prevent encroachment and development that could be done elsewhere in the city. So rather than have an extension of downtown going to the outskirts of the city, it was designed to kind of keep this, this low-profile aspect here. So I do agree with the setbacks. I won't repeat what's already been said about the setbacks. I think there, there is some conflict there that needs to be resolved and investigated. I did want to talk about the commercial uses for this property, and it's very clear what the South Livermore Valley specific plan says about the uses. It says wine country inn and restaurant, period. So I have no argument with that. In fact, I was actually looking for another place to eat besides Wendy. But one of the things that was not addressed tonight in the staff report or their overview was the 1,800-square-foot conference room commercial center. So to give you an idea of how large that is, at the planning session, we were told that this room's approximately 2,000 square feet, so take off 10 percent, so right where you're sitting back and this way here, that's about how large the conference room to be if it's 1,800 square feet. So you can fit into at least 100 people into that conference room, but there's really no mention as to what this is going to be used for. So once it's built, it could be used for all kinds of purposes. The city will have no way of maintaining or auditing what goes on in the conference center. And I'll just pull out a quote here that was said at one of the community meetings held by the applicant, that the conference room is to be used for transformational money retreats and a program for at-risk teens and adults to, to intern, gain personal and business financial skills, and gain employment opportunities. Well, that's a worthy cause, I recognize that, but if you look at the South Livermore Valley specific plan, it says only commercial businesses that, only commercial, only commercial businesses that support the wine tourism industry shall be allowed. It doesn't say should or maybe, it actually says shall be. So there's two things wrong with the conference room is, one is it's not a permitted use here, and we're going to potentially have kinds of businesses or meetings going on there. And the other thing is, is even if we do allow that, it's going to be the wrong type of business, it's not going to support the wine tourism industry. So I request that you deny the current applicant and support the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. John Marion, Sylvia Ramos-Hance, and Sam Broderick.
Hi, I'm John Marion. I own Big White House Winery, and I've lived on L Street at Sixth since 1986, so I saw this neighborhood be built. I couldn't vote when the plan went into action, and to be honest, at the time, as a kid, I didn't like that all these houses were being built out there. But if we would like to not have our hillsides look like Dublin's with 10,000 wall-to-wall townhouses, we have to be able to maintain agriculture in town. This is the big, the two agriculture things that we can do are grapes and cows. It's getting too expensive for cows, as much as I will miss them. But if you want to see grapes instead of townhouses, we need this kind of thing. We need, off topic, but we need the downtown one as well. So please, as you're thinking about this, we're talking about taking out two rows of vines for the setback. We're, we can't sell all the grapes that we grow here now. We would like to grow more grapes. I think I've got friends, probably going to talk about that as well. But it's really important. So if you guys like open space, this kind of thing is so critical. So thank you, Mayor, and Council, and staff, and audience. Every time I get up here, I get worried I'm going to lose some friends, and so I hope I didn't do that tonight, but thank you all.
Thank you, John. Sylvia Ramos-Hance, Sam Broderick, and Dennis O'Brien.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and City Council members. I'm not a public speaker, but I am a concerned mother, so I have brought my eight-year-old son Harrison with me today, as he is one of dozens of children in the surrounding neighborhoods whose safety will be negatively impacted by your vote tonight if you adopt a resolution denying this appeal. My son's freedom to ride his bicycle or walk up and down Hanson Road safely could end depending on your sole discretion. Your vote will have a lasting impact on the families that reside in the neighborhood. The plans refer to this inn as a bed and breakfast, but it cannot be so due to its size. By definition, this inn is a motel, a nice motel, but it is offering roadside lodging and no star rating. This inn will be filled with adults who booked rooms with the intent to become inebriated at local wineries. Regarding the EIR, which is, was used to approve the plans, it was conducted 22 years ago. At that time, Hanson Road ended at Arroyo Road, as Los Olivos and the Corners did not exist. This motel does not belong in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I expressed my concern in an email to the City Council dated December 6, 2019, where I listed the potentially significant findings from the initial survey. Per the survey, this EIR must be redone since potentially significant findings were concluded. That was on page 14 of the initial survey. The environmental factors I list below will be potentially affected by this project. Construction emissions, special status wildlife, nesting raptors and migratory birds protected under MBTA during construction, cultural resources, protected historical or archaeological resources pursuant to sequoia, geology soils, hazards and hazardous materials, herbicides and pesticides, soil contamination, likely release of hazardous materials into the environment when digging begins, hydrology and water quality, construction noise, alternative transportation impact to all the bicyclists and people walking and jogging on Hanson, and tribal cultural resources will be impacted if bones are dug up from Native Americans. Please do not side with special interest groups such as the Wine Growers Association and the Chambers of Commerce, who are putting the pressure to fast-track the inn. Please uphold this appeal. Thank you for your time. And before I go, I'd like to ask a quick question of the City Council. A show of hands, how many of you live within a one-mile radius of this proposed inn? It will affect us. I think that's a little bit further than a mile. Thank you for your time.
It's pretty close. Okay. Sam Broderick, Dennis O'Brien, Michelle Jeplich.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Sam Broderick. I currently work in Livermore, but I am speaking as an individual who grew up here. I moved to Livermore when I was 10 years old with my family, left to go to college, and ended up coming back after graduation to work here. So many of my friends have not come back, and they can't come to visit, their families have moved, and there's no accommodations for them to stay. Naturally, during their time off, they don't want to stay on a freeway. We are missing visitors of my generation. We have seen so many positive changes in the past 17 years that I've been here, but I feel like I speak for so many people when I say accommodations are necessary. Now I'm getting married in March and selected to go outside of the Livermore Valley so my guests could have proper accommodations. We could have made a very different decision if there were options. My hope is to see the Livermore Valley continue to flourish and grow, and I support this wine country inn. Thank you.
Congratulations on the upcoming wedding. Dennis O'Brien, Michelle Jeplich, and Will Durlig.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council persons. I'm Dennis O'Brien. I live in the Los Olivos neighborhood affected by the proposed hotel and business center. You know, City Council persons and Planning Commissioner, and even here tonight, I've heard tell me and others that we knew there was going to be a wine country inn in the neighborhood when we moved there. Now, as very personal and as condescending as that seemed at the time, they are right. The wine country inn is cited in the South Livermore Valley specific plan, and the South Livermore Valley plan is a contract between me and the city and the neighbors. I have no objection to a wine country inn as planned in the South Livermore Valley plan. However, Ms. Boss's very big hotel and business center required more parking for the restaurant and the conference rooms and the bars and their family and the staff. City planners enabled her to encroach on the 100-foot setback to Arroyo, putting in more parking space. She refers to this as overflow parking and taking out rows of existing grapevines. There's required plantings in that setback. And the city planners enabled Ms. Boss's parking lot to encroach to within 30 foot of Hanson rather than the 100-foot planted setback as required in the South Livermore Valley specific plan. Just look at the design plans. And the Planning Commission just rubber-stamped Ms. Boss's design because the city planners enabled them to do so. Now, I'm sort of pissed about this right now. The contract between the city and me, the South Livermore Valley Plan and the citizens of Livermore, will be broken if you, the City Council, too, enable the very large hotel and business center to go forward. We ask that the City Council persons show some integrity and respect for the citizens of Livermore and vote no on Mrs. Boss's plan as passed by the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Michelle Jeplich, Will Durlig, and Tim Otto.
Sorry, I didn't recognize my last name there.
Sorry if I butchered the last name, but...
I'm used to it. It's Michelle Deplitch, and the one following me will be Will Deplitch.
Oh, sorry, it went under the line, so I thought it was a J, not a D.
So I just want to say that I feel like a lot of us here are pretty consistent with our thoughts. I don't want to reiterate what everyone said. Obviously, I agree with Terry's very thorough breakdown of the plan. I, I think that a lot of us are passionate about this. I also live on Hanson Road and have seen an increase in traffic just in the years I've lived there. I, I see people's animals get run over. I see wildlife in our streets. I see deer, recently coyotes, lots of animals, and, and my family and I, we walk our dog and, on our street, and we love that. And I haven't really heard much opposition to the inn. I'm not opposed to an inn, but it doesn't seem boutiquey at all to me. It seems like a very large hotel, as it was referenced in the architect's plan. So I just think that we need to come together and decide, you know, this is something that we want, we just want it to all be in agreement that it meets the rules and requirements of the South Livermore Plan. I once wanted to move my fence 12 feet, but was not able to do so because it didn't fall within the guidelines of the South Livermore Plan, but, so I think we should stick to that. If it says we need 100-foot setback, we need 100-foot setback. So again, I also like Mrs. Bankhead's idea of possibly an arbitration. I'd just like to ask you guys to consider upholding the appeal so that we can look at the rules and regulations at play. It seems that some of them might be in question and really respect the concerns of those of us who do live on Hanson Road. And like I said, I've, I've seen that sign up there since I moved here, and I've anticipated a nice inn coming in, and I'm not opposed to a nice inn coming in to accommodate friends and family, but an event center, a restaurant, a bar, a hotel, traffic emerging onto Hanson Road is not exactly what we were hoping for. I had another thought. How many seconds do I have?
It's okay.
I have a whole minute? Oh. It's too large, it's blocking some views. Our streets are very narrow. We already struggle with parking. We, we have very, very limited parking on that street. We don't even have a painted line. It's just a very narrow street. It will not accommodate, and it doesn't, I don't believe the plan accommodates or accounts for the traffic coming in off of the 84 side, the south, the, the bottom half. Everyone's going to come up Hanson to go there. It only makes sense. So please consider that the, that the entrance should be on Arroyo. There, there is a way to successfully pacify everyone here. There's a way to get your plan in place, I promise. We just have to think thoughtfully through it. And I'm not the expert, but you know, some of these guys, you know, in partnership with some of these guys could probably get it done. Let's try to, you know, get everybody happy. It's a great neighborhood, it's a great town, you're going to have two hotels if you do it right.
Thank you, thank you very much. Will Deplitch, Tim Otto, and David First.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Again, my name is Will Deplitch. I live at Hanson Road on the corner of Hanson and Sellers. We've moved there in 2009, and, and the area is, we're truly blessed to live there. But again, and again, I'm not going to go over the details because I think those have been hammered out pretty good, is I have some concerns, and I ask Council to uphold the, the current, to, to not support the current plan and the, and the recommendation from staff as it is designed right now. First and foremost is public safety. As mentioned before, Hanson Road is not your sta, your typical, it is your, it's 24 feet wide, it does not have bike lanes. When you enter Hanson from Arroyo and you enter Hanson from Wetmore, there's two signs that say parking designated areas only, and those are limited. They really are. I don't have any parking in front of my house, and so when you have guests over and so forth, you're spread around the neighborhood. And you've heard about, you know, it is very common, very common for folks to come out on the weekends and in the afternoons to ride their bicycles, and it's, they end up riding down the center of the street. Kids ride their bikes, families go on walks, but it pushes that, that traffic out on the street. So when you talk about adding this size of a hotel, and it's what it is, with the conference room, with the restaurant, with the bar, it's going to create problems. With the advent of the, the apps for traffic, Wetmore backs up in the morning, and people use Hanson both westbound and eastbound to cut through to go out to Silicon Valley, and it is very common, very common for cars to travel through there 30, 40, 50 miles an hour. So I'm speaking to you, someone who lives there and has been living there. I have grave concern about that turn out onto Hanson Road, forcing, I think the planner talked about, an improvement to divert traffic, and I forget the word he used on Hanson. I think that makes a huge assumption. You're assuming that people are going to abide by that median. The reality is that they probably won't. And the reality is, the current developer, folks that have a financial interest in this area, they're not going to be out there to police this, and they have, they're extremely busy, the Livermore Police Department, they're not going to be out there to police the cars and the inflow of traffic. When you come up, if you come up from eastbound, they're going to turn on Tlinga to go to Hanson to go up to the, the hotel if that median is built and if the entrance is on Hanson. And I remember earlier in the evening, they talked about some different area, restaurants in the area, Kepa de Bachi and so forth. The fact of the matter is, this project is in a residential neighborhood. It is not in a commercial area. This is a resident, residential neighborhood, and so I really ask that Council weigh that heavily, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Tim Otto, David First, Terry Land.
Good evening. My name is Tim Otto. I, I'm a retired math, high school teacher from Stockton. I grew up in Milpitas and East San Jose. I've driven through these hills many, 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 many times over the last half century. I've seen a lot of change. Folks, this is a good thing. Do it. Thank you.
David First, Terry Land, Nick Harvey.
Yeah, good evening, and thank you for listening to all of our comments and taking your time this evening to listen to everyone's opinions. My name is David First. I live in Livermore. I'm a board member of Friends of Open Space and Vineyards, and I'm representing FOV this evening. Our original name was Save the Vineyards, and we're the original citizen open space advocacy group that helped preserve South Livermore and create the South Livermore Valley specific plan. Our current board studied the proposed wine country inn, and we voted unanimously to support the application of a wine country inn. We believe a wine country inn is compatible with the South Livermore Valley specific plan, and a letter to the City Planning Commission supporting the application is in your packet. On a personal note, several letters in your packet and speakers this evening have said for safety reasons, the entrance to the inn should be on, created on Arroyo Road. Just the opposite is true, just the opposite. The multi-use trail on the west side of Arroyo Road has a multitude of users every morning The multi-use trail on the west side of Arroyo Road has a multitude of users every morning, every day, all the time, walkers, walkers with dogs, walkers with strollers, joggers, runners, cyclists on Arroyo Road. If, currently, there's only one break in the trail between the Ravenswood Historic Site and Wetmore, and that's at Hanson. If you allow the creation of another break in the trail, you will increase the danger to the multitude of trail users who use the trail on Arroyo Road. In summary, I would ask that you accept the decision of your planning commission, and if you approve a Wine Country Inn, please make sure that the entrance to the inn is on Hanson Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First. Terry Land, Nick Harvey, Steve Marasue, Becky Johnston.
Hi, I'm Terry Land. I live in one of the neighborhoods right next to that, so Saviano, which is right across from Ravenswood, and I'm very excited about seeing an inn in the area, having a place for our family and friends to be able to stay, having a restaurant to be able to walk to, and having the vibrancy in the area. We already have several wineries in there. We have Ravenswood, we have Cooter Ridge, Los Pacitas, and the other winery on Wetmore. They add to the vibrancy, and I haven't heard them adding to any of the issues. For the restaurant in the inn, every restaurant that I've ever been to has a bar, and so having a bar associated with a restaurant seems like a reasonable thing to do. For the entrance, I agree with the previous speaker. I walk on that trail, and that is one of the only breaks at Hanson where people stop and look for traffic to cross. So having the entrance on Hanson and not making another cut into the Arroyo, I think is actually making it safer, and having the right turn when you exit would not have people going down Hanson. In my neighborhood, a lot of people couldn't come tonight, and so they'd asked if I'd represent them, and so there's over 22 people in the neighborhood that, you know, wanted to offer their same support and look forward to having this beautifully designed inn and something we can walk to and enjoy in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Land. Nick Harvey, Steve Marasue, Becky Johnston.
Mayor, council, staff, thank you very much for being here tonight, and, you know, the decision they all make, appreciate it one way or the other. You know, Livermore bills itself as a small town, and we have a small business trying to come in here. You know, to be honest, I'm kind of confused with what the opposition's looking for because you have some people say, hey, let's have the entrance on Arroyo Road. Hey, let's have the entrance on Hanson Road. Let's have the address on Arroyo so that people go around. Oh, my husband works at Apple, so this is the best way to go around it. Did he break an NDA? Can't tell you, don't really know, but, you know, I really can't understand why we are having this conversation. You know, if, you know, people are going to park on the side of the road if this were to get approved, let's call the Livermore Police and have them come out. I mean, they may be busy sitting at meetings like this and not being able to actually police it. You know, I came here to work at the lab five years ago. I bought a house here, and it was boring as hell, and I left. I bought a house in Hayward, there's nowhere to stay. I was here with a girlfriend a couple months ago. I got an Airbnb on the east side of town by Vasco because there's no hotels. You know, the hotels in Livermore have a striking similarity, either proximity Costco or views of the 580. Not really great things. I really hope that we make sensible decisions here. I appreciate y'all being here, you know, in the judiciary body that I guess y'all are acting at in this case, you know. General plans and specific plans are meant as a guideline, right? You know, how would you know 20 years in advance what an area's going to look like? Imagine if it said that the Wine Country Inn had to have dial-up internet. Kind of be difficult to chill on Netflix on that now, right? So, you know, thank y'all very much, really appreciate it. You know, I understand that the safety concerns, I'm a cyclist myself, I used to cycle these roads, you know, very regularly. So, safety is a big issue. You know, hopefully people can slow down in the community. You know, currently, if there's coyotes and deer and whatnot that are killed in the community, hopefully that's not from the people that already live there. Maybe they can slow down as well. So, you know, thank you very much again, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Steve Marasue, Betsy Johnston, Michael Frederick.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council and staff. My name's Stephen Marasue, and I've been making wine here in Livermore for 23 or 24 years now, and my family is, has been making wine in California since before Lincoln was president, in San Jose for most of that time. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about what a wine country is. A wine country is a vibrant place that is, that exists because there are people who want to come to a place and taste the wine that's made from the fruit grown in that area. In San Jose, where my family had acreage planted since 1854, there were other uses that were deemed of greater priority than grape growing. Houses came in, Silicon Valley was booming in the 70s and 80s. There is no wine country in the South Bay anymore. There is no guarantee that there's always going to be a wine country in the Livermore Valley. You don't have to plant grapes according to the plan. You can plant hay, alfalfa, other things. You don't have to have grapes. Vineyards are some of the greatest, most beautiful landscaping that you can have, and if there isn't a vibrant visiting population who can stay here and take advantage of the great wines that are made here, there's no incentive for investors to come in and plant more vineyards. What we're seeing at Crane Ridge Properties on Greenville is sort of a natural evolution of these vineyards being phased out. You get about 30 years for vineyards to be usable from an economic standpoint. If you've been on Tesla Road in the last few weeks, you've probably seen a bunch of vineyard already torn out. 10 years ago, we had more acreage planted of grapes in Livermore than we have now. We're going in the wrong direction in terms of creating a vital place for people to come to drink great wine. A lot of that has to do with the ability to stay there for more than an hour or two. If you can find a place to stay overnight, downtown hopefully is going to be fantastic. This Wine Country Inn, I think, is going to be fantastic. We have an opportunity of lengthening out the ability for an area to be an actual vibrant wine country. And I hope that you find wisdom in your choices and that we can set aside as many of these issues as we can, as we create more vibrancy and guarantee a longer wine country, true wine country in Livermore Valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marasue. Betsy Johnston, Michael Frederick, Don Argula.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and members of the city council. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you also for meeting with me early on before this meeting. I wanted to reiterate, I'm not opposed to a Wine Country Inn. We're here, and I ditto what Mr. Young said earlier, but I wanted to summarize my key points on, I think arbitration would be a great thing. I'd like to put a four-way stop at the corner of Hanson and Arroyo. We're 15-year residents in the first block west of Hanson. Why, safety first. Five out of seven of our mailboxes on the first block west of the site have been mowed down by either inebriates or rush drivers. I'd like to move the Wine Country Inn's entrance to Arroyo. Why, safety first. If you actually try to exit Hanson onto Arroyo going west, you actually have to stop before the stop sign to make sure you're not going to hit a pedestrian. The crosswalk is not very well put, and then you have to creep out to look right or left across the crosswalk to turn. So if you put a four-way stop there, I think it'd be far safer. And by moving the Wine Country Inn's entrance to Arroyo, it would also save a lot of the issues on Hanson that you've heard this evening. Also, I think it's important to shrink the current footprint of the inn to 20 rooms or less. Why? 100-foot setback requirements can be met, and additional much-needed parking spaces can be added. And also, I think at some of the meetings, we showed you the CCNRs that we received when we moved into Los Olivos, and the footprint of the current inn is like four times the size of the footprint on our CCNR. My suggestion, the restaurant is not yet leased. They're having trouble leasing it. So move the restaurant to a location where the caretaker's unit is, and that will hopefully allow it, the beautiful views, to be, you know, come leased, attract patrons, and drive revenue. Also, then move the caretaker's unit home to where the current restaurant site is, which is close to Hanson, and they'd be our neighbors. And that way, it'll be reduced in size and hopefully a better vantage point to manage the property. Also, then move the garbage enclosure to the southeast corner of the property. Why? To be closer to the restaurant if that's moved to the southeast, and also to prevent illegal dumping. So with that, I'd like to uphold the appeal and send it back for full redesign. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnston. Michael Frederick, Don Argula, and Harrison.
Mayor, council, staff, I'm speaking to ask you to accept your staff's recommendation and deny the appeal of the planning commission's approval of the Wine Country Inn. I live less than a mile from the proposed site. There are three wineries within easy walking distance of the site, and a fourth within a so much longer walk. As you know, the site has been zoned for an inn since the creation of the South Livermore Plan. We have heard many times in this room that the Livermore Wine Country needs a facility like the proposed inn. Here's your chance, don't lose it. If not this proposal, then what? It seems like no development of any commercial property in that area is acceptable to some. Considering the direction of the state to limit city's ability to control its own zoning, this property and several other in the area could end up as high-density housing. I just wanted to comment that the traffic issues in this area has nothing to do with a proposed Wine Country Inn. It has everything to do with the traffic problems of the Bay Area. Hanson does not have a bike lane because there is a bike slash walking path that's a good 15 or 20 feet wide right across the street from the proposed inn. I don't know that it needs a bike lane. It's, I walk past here all the time. Putting an entrance on Arroyo, just walk past there once, look at the ditches, look at the land, the changes in the terrain you would have to make to make that entrance possible. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Don Argula, Harrison, Doug Mann.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand, city council, staff. Don Argula, CEO of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to, I just want to echo the comments that were made by Brandy from the Wine Growers Association, Mr. O'Leary, and some of the wine businesses that are here in support of this project. We have been supporting this project since March was our first letter of record, and then we attended the planning commission meeting to express our support then, and we continue to do so. We support the construction, the delivery of projects, of infrastructure that is needed for our wine industry to support its economic viability and this inn as well. And the activities that are associated with this establishment, including dining and meetings and other activities, will help ensure the economic viability of this inn so that it can continue to support our visitors to our wine region. So it's all connected. So pulling one thing off or, you know, picking away at it reduces the economic viability of this project. So we like what we see here. So aside from this, so that's on behalf of the chamber, I am a 35-year resident of Livermore, and I live in the South Livermore area. I live in Sunset East, and I've lived there before the time of these neighborhoods came to be. There was nothing along Arroyo Road except for Ravenswood. My son, who was, you know, under the age of 10, and his friends would ride their bikes down Arroyo Road. We didn't have the beautiful path that we have today. That's really cool. I'm glad we've got that. And they used to go down to Sycamore Grove, and I'd pack them a lunch, and they'd hang out, and it was pretty cool. So things have changed, yes. I think it's improved. Some of the things that have changed that are maybe more on the negative side really have to do with the fact that we live in an incredibly economically strong region of the Bay Area. I've seen the traffic, 84, 580, 680, we're all experiencing it. And one could say, before these neighborhoods came in, that when they come in, they're just going to bring more traffic. And they did, but, you know, we planned for that. Many of them bring their children to the school, Sunset School in my neighborhood. I see them all coming in along all of our roadways every morning and every afternoon. But, you know, we take provisions. We plan for that. We make sure that we have safety. We're all a community. We're okay with that. And when all of these things were being planned, it never, in my wildest dreams, would I ever consider opposing them. I knew the city was being very deliberate. We had expertise on our staffs and at the county level, too, to plan these things. I think today, we're pretty happy. My husband and I, the value of our home, of course, is very high. But don't be afraid of the future. We plan and we prepare for the future. These plans are our blueprints. Let's prepare, and don't be afraid of the future. We support this. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Argula. And Harrison, welcome back. Doug Mann and Lisa Traumovich. Yeah, don't worry, that falls off.
Oh, no.
It does that. No worries.
Hi, I would like to say if you build this inn, it will affect me, and I, and my dad takes me on bike rides sometimes, right? I can't really, I can't go on bike rides anymore because people could speed and there's too much traffic. Somebody could get hit or killed. And thank you for your time.
Harrison, good job. Thank you very much. Doug Mann, Lisa Traumovich, and Jacqueline Taran Rankle.
Well, I think Harrison did a great job.
I think he did as well.
Nice to have him here.
A future government leader.
A future government, yeah, exactly. I'd like to start off by echoing, well, basically referring back to Councilmember Warner's early comment that you don't know who is going to own this place. I mean, right now, yeah, it's maybe a nice family, but let's not forget, look at Purple Orchid Inn. I mean, that sold after a few years, and so, you know, eventually, it will be somebody else's, and you have to decide this on the merits of what it is, not who might be owning it. But the other thing I would, you know, it seems like this thing is not really fully baked. You know, I don't really think you should go with what the planning commission has given you here. I think it's important for issues like this that you really take the side of the residents, and we have residents on both sides here right now. But I think you have some residents who are not going to let this go. It reminds me a little bit of the Garaventa Hill issue, which has, you had residents here begging you for, to support them, and they felt like it didn't, ended up in a lawsuit. By the way, I was at the hearing on Friday, and I think the way that's going to go is that there won't be any development on Garaventa Hill, which is fine because we have mitigation money to buy it anyway. So that'll work out, but not after a long, you know, more time and an expensive lawsuit. And, you know, I don't think the city should do unforced errors on things like this. I will say, in the presentation, there was a lot of emphasis on a lot of onsite parking, and I am glad that they pointed out that parking is that important. I don't like to stay at a hotel that doesn't have onsite parking, and I can't imagine why anyone would want to build a hotel or an inn that didn't have parking right there where you can use it. And it also occurs to me, it's a 30-room hotel, you might have an opportunity to fix two problems with one decision, because the West Side Hotel downtown could be about that much bigger. So even if this doesn't go through, you can have the rooms and the onsite parking. And I think, and you can check with Jason on this, it may be legal for you to simply reverse the development agreement that you have with Presidio and make that happen without a lot more delay, and we can get going building those hotel rooms that we want because we do want tourism and places for people to stay here, and we don't want to waste time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Lisa Traumovich and Jacqueline Taran Rankle.
Hi, I'm Lisa Traumovich, resident of Livermore, and it's been a number of speakers, so what I had written down to say, I think I won't say. I do want to encourage you to do whatever you can to move this project forward. We, the planning process that the city of Livermore goes through, it's one of the early speakers that I think we deserve an award for it. I think we do. This council in particular and the staff, the last couple of years, has really listened to a lot of feedback from people that just have something they want, some people that are actually experts at what they do. And it's a very, very difficult process, and the planning process is like a puzzle, but it's not just the physical puzzle of, well, why don't we just use the bike trails that we've spent a lot of money building? Why... Why don't we have an entrance here, an entrance there? It's not just the physical puzzle, but it's the economic puzzle. And only a couple of people have mentioned it, so I want to be the, maybe only the third or fourth person to say it. The economic puzzle of how Livermore works is very, very difficult to figure out, but it's important. We don't have anything if our whole econ, our local economy collapses. And we have had a very thoughtful planning process. I didn't realize that this part of the plan was started in nineteen ninety-three, but certainly in the last twenty years, where we have revisited our plans, we've looked at the economic reasons for doing what we're doing as well. And the wineries, the, a lot of those are family-owned, people have put a lot of time, energy, their personal savings, and love into these industries, these small, little micro-industries. We have the downtown businesses, the same thing. And we, we pride ourselves in Livermore on this small-town feel. It's part of our brand, it's part of what makes us attractive to tourists. We have agritourism, we have cultural tourism, Livermore Shakespeare Festival, and all of this is linked. It's not just one inn in one neighborhood. This inn is extremely important. It's extremely important to agritourism, cultural tourism, and to all of the residents that have invested a lot of time and money and energy and love in building up a Livermore that we all enjoy and like. And these businesses can't necessarily hold on forever if we sit around and squabble about things and, and kill something that we've been waiting for, for twenty years. And we need this inn, we need the Downtown Boutique Hotel, a lot of time has gone into it, no one's rushed into anything. Nothing is perfect, and I hope that there is the legal way for you to take whatever the laws and the rules are, look at the big picture, the spirit of the plan, know the difference between whether something is actually mandated or whether it's a guideline or a blueprint, and as somebody said, I think it was Mr. Mira Sue, have the wisdom to pull the big picture together. Because probably not many of us out here have the big picture in mind. We all have our little piece of the puzzle, but you guys are charged with putting the whole puzzle together. It's not easy, I do not envy you, I would never be you. Thank you for being you.
Thank you, Ms. Traumovich. Jacqueline Taran Rankle.
Hello, thank you. I am a Livermore native, been here my whole life, lived in South Livermore my entire life. I live four doors down from my mother. I'm here with my neighbor and girlfriend, we all live on Superior. I am very concerned. Right now, the traffic, and I know it's not related to local residents, but Arroyo is being used as a bypass road for the bypass. So in the morning, you cannot get out onto a Royal Road as people are cutting through, going to work, same around five. My concern isn't with the boutique, we knew that was there in the Livermore Plan, and everybody supports that. What we are concerned about is the large conference center and the traffic that that will create. I live directly behind Ravenswood, there's weddings there all the time. What's going to happen when we have a wedding, as well as a conference and maybe an event going on up at Wintie? It can be very dangerous. I walk on that path every day. There's lots of people out there with children and animals, and I would ask the city council to please, please protect the South Livermore Plan. Friends of Livermore saved this town. If it wasn't for them, we would look like Dublin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, that's the last of the comment cards that I have, so I'm going to close the public comment period. This is right around the time we take a quick break. Okay, let's take about a ten-minute break, and then we'll come back for round two. Thank you very much. And we'll be back. Stay tuned. Good evening, good evening. Okay, and welcome back to round two of the January thirteenth Livermore City Council. We're back from our brief break, we just went through five point oh-one. I heard a number of comments about the proposed Wine Country Inn. So with that, bringing it on back here, as we just heard from all the comments, and I'd like to give the staff an opportunity to respond to what we heard from, from the appellant. There are certain comments that we heard, and just to give you folks an opportunity to address any questions or comments that you wanted to refine for the council.
Sure, I just add, we heard a lot about the setbacks, and generally, the setbacks in the specific plan, the one-hundred-foot setback from roadways for commercial sites is correct in that policy four-dash-seven. Those were intended to apply to the roadways surrounding the sub-areas, the internal streets were not developed at that time.
Well, the question was, so was, was the west side of Hanson, did that exist when this was developed?
The west side of a road.
When the plan was developed in nineteen ninety-seven, was there a west side of Hanson?
There were no internal roadways inside what was SubArea Five at the time.
Okay, so that, that, Hanson did not exist where it is today?
Right, none of those internal roads did they, those were developed as each residential development went forward. And so what you'll see in the specific plan is that that one-hundred-foot buffer from Arroyo Road is prescribed specifically when it talks about this commercial development. And then as the development plan sort of continued, the conceptual plan in this, in the specific plan, if you look at the diagram, actually shows about a fifty-foot setback from a new roadway, which in this case turned out to be Hanson Road. And so the planning at development, which is the zoning for this development, reflect, reflects the implementation of the, the specific plan illustratively and prescriptively. And so you have a hundred-foot setback from a Royal Road, you've got a fifty-foot setback from Hanson Road, which then was in existence, and you could write a setback from that particular roadway location. So altogether, those implement, the zoning implements a specific plan, and those setbacks are within the zoning. And this, this proposal is consistent with both of those setback requirements. Regarding the conference space, it is kind of typical for hotels to have an ancillary conference space. In this particular case, eighteen hundred square feet, the applicant can respond to more of the programming of that space, if you'd like to hear from, from them. But it is very consistent with other hotels. It's slightly, it's about five hundred feet smaller than the conference space available over at the Purple Orchid Inn, which is slightly smaller in scale in terms of rooms, but, but has a more intense use in terms of wedding, weddings and events planned there. And if there are any other certain aspects you'd like me to respond to, I can do, I can try that.
The restaurant and bar.
Oh, yes. Similar to ancillary use, those are also considered, the bar and restaurant are considered ancillary to the hotel use. And in this particular case, there's a small bar on the entrance to the lobby, the applicant's intending to highlight South Livermore wines there, I think it has about eight stools there. And then the restaurant is also appropriately sized, at seventy-seven seats, to match the parking that they've provided. And again, all of those things function together to contribute to the viability of the overall primary use, which in this case is the Wine Country Inn.
Okay. One question that I have, so I guess the two big issues here that I've heard tonight, the setbacks were a big one, and also access, access to the site. What was, I heard several people, several speakers reference the, that they wanted the access that the driveway had, or should be moved to the, to Arroyo Road. What I also heard is that the removal of existing grapevines is prohibited. And in my mind, if they were to cut a driveway from Arroyo into the site, they would have to remove grapevines. So it would be specifically prohibited to put an access road on Arroyo Road because they would have to remove grapevines in order to gain access to the site. Am I, did I miss something?
Following that line, I'm thinking, yes.
Okay, so according to the South Livermore Valley Specific Plan, and by the way, when I read that, it is very specific. I mean, it was like, okay, thirty rooms, thirty thousand square feet, Site D, thank you very much, any questions? But, right, so according to the South Livermore Valley Specific Plan, and we, we heard from Dr. First and a few others about the, the concern from the Park District, so specifically in the plan, having the access moved to Arroyo would be prohibited because it would require the removal of the grapevines?
Yes, and it's also prohibited, or it's identified to come off of Hanson Road in the development agreement, which is a legally binding contract between the city and the property owner and applicant.
Right.
That requires the entrance to be on Hanson.
Right, and that was why Hanson was, was enlarged at the, at the connection to Arroyo Road, which was for that purpose.
Correct.
Okay, but I just wanted to be clear about the removal of the vines, so according to the South Livermore Specific Plan, it, the access could not be on Arroyo because it would require the removal of the vines. Okay, I'm, I'm good on that one.
Can I ask one question on that?
Sure.
But I understand what you were just saying, but what I heard was, the actual documents, the contracts, irrespective of the vines, don't let it happen.
Right.
Right, and this isn't anything to do about vines, this is about, what we're here with is the, the contracts and the rules, and just want to make sure I understand that we have, as a council, no latitude in this proceedings to move the entrance.
Right.
That's correct.
Right, we don't have, this isn't something we can do in these proceedings.
That would be a legislative act, this is not a legislative act before you.
So we're just not allowed? So it's, it's out of the scope of these proceedings.
Right, correct. Okay, well, let's, there's a couple of different ways we could go at this. Do you want to take the individual elements? And if you have questions about those, we can address those, or do you want to just go straight to the?
Can I answer that question?
Sure.
I, I think that, you know, listening to all of this, there are many good points. They fall in two categories, whether they're pertinent to these proceedings, and then there are others about the value of the thing in general. And I would suggest that if we could, if we could take each point one by one, and because we're talking about rules and whether they match, and we take each rule that we're concerned about and do it, rather than us all talk simultaneously about all rules in random order. So if we just did one, and I think we disposed of it, we have no latitude on the entrance.
So access.
Okay, so now, the question is, what's the next topic of a rule that we need to talk about, and let's just focus on that one, put it, you know, dispose of it one way or the other, and then go to the next? That's my suggestion.
Okay, it's a good one. Well, we.
Didn't we do setbacks?
Pardon, setback?
Yeah, we, I thought we did setbacks. You asked about setbacks, and I think we understood the answer for setbacks, right?
Well, that was the, the Hanson setback, I think there was some question about the, the setback on Arroyo, whether it would be allowed to remove, or to place ancillary parking, overflow parking.
Yeah, the overflow parking. I think overflow parking is one of the topics we need to understand better.
Right, so let's, let's cover overflow parking then.
Let's do it.
So we'll ask Steve to do it.
Okay.
Sure, so the proposal meets the parking requirement for a hotel and a restaurant, established by the specific plan on our development code, without the overflow parking. It's been a practice of ours in the past to allow overflow parking within the vineyard area or orchards. That occurs in a few places. There is space here that could potentially accommodate, if you wanted to look at adding some vines or plantings back into the buffer area, that's certainly appropriate.
There was some question about whether or not, let's see, the examples that you gave regarding overflow parking were Purple Orchid, Wintie's, I think.
Concanon.
Concanon.
Right.
And so Purple Orchid is outside the city limits.
That's right.
Right. The other two are wineries. So the point was made that it's not allowed for inns or restaurants, so.
Overflow parking is neither prohibited nor explicitly allowed in your code. It does not speak directly to that. That gives you the flexibility as decision-makers to, for example, eliminate the overflow parking. It's not required by code, so that you do have that flexibility to say you'd rather have the two rows of vines return and place, and remove the overflow parking. There is no requirement for that in any of your codes. You couldn't force the applicant to do that if they weren't proposing that. You could require that the area be planted. You could also require that more planting be interspersed in that overflow parking and reduce the number of overflow spaces, but still allow some parking in that area. The specific plan does not provide direction on that. In other words, the, the idea that the area is to be planted is in your specific plan, so that anything that you would do to increase your planning would certainly be consistent with your specific plan in that area.
But there's no prohibition, just because this is not a winery.
That's correct. Your specific plan is silent on that side, it, it is actually explicitly allowed in your specific plan in winery cases, noting that actually the bulk of the parking in those cases is unpaved, which is unusual for us in the city, and so that's why it's called out, to actually say, with a, with a very limited amount of paved parking for a winery, the bulk of their parking can be an unpaved area in the vineyard areas. In this particular case, all of the required parking has to be paved, and so that's explicitly listed in your specific plan.
Sure.
But the ability to do overflow parking in the vineyard area is consistent with your, your practice of items, both the ones that have been implemented in the county, by county jurisdiction, and other ones in the city. And you have some discretion in that particular case to reduce, eliminate, or redesign that overflow parking.
So can I?
So, I, well, go ahead. I had a, just an additional question regarding parking in the sixty-one spaces. I think it was, again, brought up by somebody about the employees. So of the sixty-one required, and sixty-one proposed, are there spaces then for employees as well? I mean, how do they, how are they included in the parking requirement?
The, the information we have is provided by the Transportation, the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and they calculate the deliveries and employee parking. That is all taken into account for the required parking, and that includes, is included within the sixty-one parking spaces.
And the development code and the specific plan don't require additional parking in addition to the one per bedroom plus one for every ten bedrooms that accommodates employees, visitors, and folks staying in the rooms.
So that's the third, that's the thirty-three, that's one of the, thirty divided by ten, you get three, that's the three?
Right, all of your development code standards, basically, are based on averages for similar uses throughout the United States. So it is very rare that you have every employee, every room, every stool in your restaurant occupied at exactly the same moment by different people.
Okay.
And so all of those standards, and that's how our standards are ultimately developed, because otherwise you'd end up with massive amounts of parking, very rarely used.
Great, thanks for that.
So the, the question I have, I want to make sure in terms of what we can and can't do. So I think what I heard is that it's within our ability tonight to say, we have heard the request that we not get into that hundred-foot setback on Arroyo and not allow the overflow parking and the removal of some of those vines there. That's within our ability to say that.
Yes, that's correct.
And that doing that is, all of the parking is satisfied without getting into that hundred-foot setback?
The sixty-one spaces that are paved, not within the hundred-foot setback, meet the requirements of your code, and your code is the only requirement that you can require.
So one way to be responsive to some of the comments would be to eliminate that, and that's within our ability?
Yes.
Because one of the things that I heard tonight, one of, is a direct quote, "The overflow parking must be eliminated." And, you know, so what we've heard is the removal of vines is prohibited, and the overflow parking must be eliminated. So it sounds like that would be the way, one of the ways to.
So, so if we want to take these at one at a time, I would propose that, with respect to the overflow parking, that we, as a council, do not allow it.
Okay. All right, so we'll put that down. Okay, so are we done with the setback? Okay, any other questions or comments on setbacks? Okay, any other questions or comments on setbacks? Okay, parking? Any other questions on amount of parking?
We're not voting.
No, no, we're just, if anybody's got questions, we're just going to go through all of the different components, to make sure that we've addressed all the comments. So we've discussed the conference space, the restaurant.
We didn't discuss it. I mean, we heard from staff.
Oh.
I'd like to hear from the applicant about the conference space. Is she here? Or he here?
Okay.
So I'm sorry, you had a question about the conference space?
Yeah, what's the plan?
So the conference space, as staff had mentioned, there are ancillary uses to the operations of the Livermore Wine Country Inn. So they're divided, it's actually, there's a partition within the conference room spaces, to have two conference rooms for anything from staff operations, to ancillary meetings, to the general operations of the hotel itself. It'd be available for guests' use. They're meeting rooms. They're not conference centers. It's not an event center. Those uses were not on the application.
So who do you think, I mean, so there was seemingly some concern that conferences would be held there, and people that would attend the conference weren't necessarily staying at the inn?
Yeah, the conference room is a conference room for meetings. It's not a conference center to be held for talks. It's not a conference for like a convention. It's a conference room. It's a meeting room. Just as you would have in any office building, you'd have a conference room where you'd have staff meetings, or, in this case, maybe housekeeping meetings, or management meetings, or perhaps meeting with a representative from a vineyard, or talking about the wine list, or some operational aspects to the hotel. In most cases, when we're doing hotels, we do provide an ancillary conference space to have those said meetings. This conference room is actually, has a partition dividing the conference space in half, so you have two small conference rooms, so they can have one meeting for administrative use, and then another meeting maybe for a guest who may be wanting to meet somebody else, so. And if I may, if I can just make mention about the overflow parking. The overflow parking came as a result of our community outreach meetings and the residents' concerns about having off-site parking. So we made the accommodation, working with staff, to find overflow parking within our site. So we were able to accommodate the site design in order to allow for the overflow parking on our site, so it did not trickle out into the neighborhood. So that's kind of where that came from.
Understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so conference space?
Wait, yeah, I just want to put the conference room in, or the meeting room, in perspective. That's not large, in my experience, and I've gone executive in many of these things. And downtown, you know, the thing was conference center. We're talking 30,000 square feet. So I think the use of conference center in this respect, with respect to that size room, is maybe a misnomer. I think it's more appropriately a meeting room.
Okay. Yeah, my thought was along the same lines, because I've been to many of these, you know, when I used to work at a bank, it's, we showed up, and we, in fact, our group rented out most of the rooms, so there was no additional parking needed. We just used the rooms and used the conference center and kept everything in-house. That was, we found a lot of small inns all over the country that we'd meet at, and that's right. I guess the interpretation of what could be is depends on the user, you know, and in my experience, that's what we did.
Councilman Monroe?
I'll second that with a personal use as well. My family just got together for a reunion at an inn in Monterey, not in Livermore, and there was a small conference room where 27 of us fit in, because none of the rooms that we had, we wanted an onsite place to meet, and that sort of strikes me as this is what this is about.
So if we get back to it, with respect to the rules, is there anything in the rules that prohibits that 1,800-square-foot facility?
No, there's nothing written that addresses that.
Go ahead, next. Traffic impacts? There's no, yeah. The traffic's impact on both Arroyo and on Hanson. So there were concerns about, okay. Take one, Mr. Van.
Thank you. Yeah, so the project will generate some traffic. I think it was 344 trips total?
Yeah.
344 daily trips, and the cars will use a variety of routes to get to the inn. There was some mention that we didn't consider traffic coming from the west, or going to the west. That's absolutely incorrect. The study did include trip generation to different parts of the city, and it makes sense for cars coming to and from the west under normal conditions, perhaps not in the morning if car traffic's all jammed up on Wetmore, but if Wetmore's working as it should, cars will not turn onto Hanson, most likely till they get to Linga, because that is the shortest route. And if you're using Google Maps or Waze, that's the way it will tell you. In fact, Joanna tested that, and that's what she found.
Yeah.
But the traffic will be split among the various routes, so the actual volume of traffic on any one route is going to be very minimal. But just to satisfy my curiosity, I asked Joanna to assign all 344 trips down Hanson, and look at the levels of service at the always stops down there to see what would happen. And we still have acceptable levels of service, even with all the project traffic. So there will not be any sort of significant congestion or queuing caused by traffic going to this project on Hanson Road.
And all that was anticipated in the original, in the original plan, the original EIR? Is that correct?
Yes.
So is there anything different from this project than was originally proposed, I mean, whether, how the build-out happened? Is there anything different in this project than was originally proposed or conceived in the South River Valley specific plan? Or did that develop as anticipated?
The restaurant is smaller than we anticipated. The number of homes in the subarea built out just as we anticipated, in the pattern that was laid out by the specific plan. The various commercial uses have either been developed or remain to be developed, as was anticipated. The only thing that's different in this particular case is the restaurant is smaller, limited to 77 seats versus the 100 seats, which is permitted by the specific plan.
Does a gentleman identify himself? I have heard through this person.
Oh, that's Mark Roberts.
Yeah, he's right next to him.
Mark Roberts, our city manager.
He's the city attorney here. These people should be going to the city attorney.
City attorney, sir.
Well, I think Mr. Roberts was one of the guys who was involved in planning the whole South River Valley specific plan, going way back. So that's why the question was directed to Mr. Roberts.
These are legal issues.
Actually, I think it's a development issue, but be that as it may. Okay, so we've spoken, yes, any question? Okay, so we have conference space.
I did actually.
All right.
We had a comment that traffic on Hanson Road can get to be 30, 40, 50 miles an hour. I've driven down Hanson Road. I'm wondering how that's possible?
Yeah, but that's, that's speed without a hotel or an inn.
Yeah, that's probably people that live there.
Right.
So can we, with respect to the traffic, one question that I heard that was interesting or a suggestion was a four-way stop at Hanson and Arroyo. I don't know that that's within our purview here or not, but if you can speak to that, if it's in our purview to talk about that, then I'd like to hear your thoughts on it.
So the city uses established criteria for determining locations that would have always stops recommended for installation. We could look at that location, I think we may have already, and I'm going to have Joanna respond to that.
Yeah, so the criteria is for the minor street, which is Hanson in this case, at least have 100 vehicles per hour for eight hours during the day. And right now, the daily trips on Hanson is about 540, and approximately 600. So it's impossible to meet the criteria.
So in other words, there's not enough traffic volume on Hanson to justify an always stop?
By how much? I missed the numbers.
So we have 500 in a whole day, and we need 800 over eight hours.
So with all the cut-through traffic from the Central Valley to Silicon Valley, we might get there, and then we can deal with it?
Well, I believe we have cut-through traffic today, but we still only have 500 and...
No, 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 I know, but it's not like it's not going to get worse. So I'm just saying, it's something that we can deal with, and it's not going to get worse because of this inn. But I'm just, as a thought, when you do hit the threshold, we can deal with it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other, any other issues? We've got traffic, land use, restaurant, parking, setback.
Well, there was the, and I don't know if it's, it was also brought up, that, you know, when you take out trees, you can either pay into a fund, or you can replace them on-site. I heard the request to replace them on-site. I'm open to that. If that's within our purview, I want to hear that.
I don't even know what trees are there.
There's some conferring here.
Yeah, so there is an option, there are about 17 trees to be removed.
Oh, really?
There is an option to have those planted on-site, or to contribute into the urban forest fund, and the mitigation plan would require a one-to-two ratio for all trees that are being removed. So two trees for every tree removed.
Any of these heritage trees?
No, they're not.
Okay.
So it is within your purview to direct those to be replaced on-site?
So I would suggest that that's where I'm coming from.
So what's the plan now, just to pay into the tree fund?
You give the choice.
Oh, give the choice. And we could, we could set the expectation that we want them to, okay.
Can I just be clear? If they paid into the urban fund, would it be, they pay in two trees for every tree, one tree removed? If they just replace the tree, it's one tree, one tree for one tree? Is that right?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Monroe, would you repeat that question?
Sure. If they pay into the urban tree fund, it's, they pay in two trees for every one tree removed, correct? Is that what I heard?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. If they just, if they do a straight replacement, it's one tree for one tree?
No, it's still two to one.
It's still two to one. Thank you.
All right. Is that your, we can work that as a motion?
Oh, no, I was, we're just collecting things. I mean, there are two things that I'm interested in terms of modifying what the planning commission did. One is removing the overflow parking and the impact on the buffer. The other one is, I would just soon see the trees on-site. So that, I mean, we're just collecting things. But I still have a couple more questions, if I may. So, and I'll just mention that I've met with the people who are appealing the decision, and I've got a couple of more questions based on those conversations. One was around the use of the terms like hotel, and inn, and everything else, and is there any defined term? How do we think about this? Because other people in the audience said, well, this is too big, or something, a hotel versus an inn. I just want to know, are there any issues with respect to the language and how we describe this, and what's the proper way to interpret the documents?
The specific plan itself has a definition for a wine country inn. That's a hotel facility with no more than 30 guest rooms. May have a large restaurant associated with it, maximum site size, three acres, maximum floor area ratio is .25. So it defines a wine country inn as a hotel facility. And we also have a separate definition in the specific plan for bed and breakfast inn. That's an owner-occupied facility with fewer than 10 guest rooms. Food service is limited to breakfast. And the site size is a little bit smaller at an acre, with the same floor area ratio maximum of .25.
So we would use that reference to hotel to refer to other code sections when we're evaluating standards?
So the hotel, okay, so, and that all makes sense. So we don't, we're not twisted in this, then?
Well, it's also, just to expand on it a little bit, as I said, the maximum floor area ratio is .25, but the maximum site size is three acres. So actually, then, it's the maximum site size would be three acres.
Okay. So with respect to that, we don't have any language issues and favorable interpretations in one place or another. So then, the other thing that was alluded to here was, I think it was Mrs. Caban or something, about the verandas and the fire things, and whether we had to enclose them or not. And I remember when we were bringing Concanon, you know, talking about that and bringing it in, and I met with Sierra Club and others, and really got into this thing about what's a room and what's not, and how many walls. So could you just clarify that, because it was brought up again tonight, as to what those rules are, and whether there are any issues?
Sure. Generally, the floor area ratio is the amount of space that's enclosed on three sides or more with a wall, and has a roof. And so there are some balconies that meet that definition, some that don't, and are open, and there, there's adequate floor area space to be consistent with that overall floor area ratio.
Okay. All right, so we don't, we're okay with respect to that?
Yes, we are.
So the other thing that I heard was, what we've said here is that cap it at 77 in terms of restaurant, and then the rule was to provide more if they went beyond that. But the suggestion out there was to just say, we're done. I think that's what I heard.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so, I'm inclined to go there, and is that within our purview?
It is. In other words, you can't prohibit them from making a subsequent application to expand the restaurant seating beyond 77, but you could require that to return to the planning commission for review and consideration, so.
So that's the way to implement that request?
Yes, because you can't change, you can't change the zoning at this point. You can change the review process as subsequent.
Change the review process. So I think that, to be responsive to that request, I would suggest we do change the review process.
We would rework that condition to make it clear that additional seating in the restaurant, either internal or external, would require an amendment which would turn to the planning commission for review.
Okay.
Any other issues, questions, or comments that we need to address? Councilman Monroe?
We've heard some comments here, and some in the letters, about the nature of the caretaker's cottage, and whether that was, that conformed to code. Could you speak to that?
The caretaker's unit is a conditionally permitted use, and the South River Valley specific plan requires a conditional use permit, and so does the zoning. There aren't any limitations to size or bedrooms. It's basically stated to be a conditionally permitted use, and we have imposed conditions, such as not being able to rent it out as a short-term rental.
And in this case, it's architecturally... And in this case, it's architecturally integrated, so it's within the inn footprint. And the idea behind it is to have onsite management and oversight 24/7. If a resident or someone has an issue, uh, they could literally walk up and knock on the door, talk to the owner, and resolve an issue that way. So the idea behind any caretaker's unit, whether it's for a field or a, uh, vineyard, or in this case, a Wine Country Inn, is to provide that oversight and management, uh, and eyes on the property continuously. And in this particular case, the zoning allows that with a conditional use permit. It's appropriately sized to be subordinate and, again, an ancillary, an ancillary or accessory use to the overall inn. And, uh, that's why the planning commission and staff are recommending approval of that conditional use permit.
All right. Further issues?
Nope.
I'm good. Okay. So then moving on to, uh, what is the pleasure of the council?
I'll, I'll make a motion, but I don't, even though I've been around here a long time, I don't know exactly how to do that.
That's why we have city attorney.
Right. So I, where I would like to do is approve what the planning, uphold what the planning condition, uh, commission did with three modifications, that review process for the 77, remove the overflow parking, and, um, require that the trees be replaced on site.
Okay. So what we're understanding, the motion would be, um, that you would be adopting a resolution denying appeal 19-001, upholding the planning commission's approval of site plan design review 19-004 and conditional use permit 19-006, subject to the conditions that were included in the staff report with three additional conditions, um, essentially removing the overflow parking, requiring on-street, onsite tree remo- tree removal to be replaced on site, um, and requiring that any expansion of the restaurant beyond 77 seats, um, returned to the planning commission for review and consideration.
See, that's why you're where you are and I am where I am. You're good. So that's exactly what I meant to say. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by, uh, Councilmember Warner, seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to, uh, thank everybody for being here tonight. I think, uh, it was good dialogue and, uh, appreciate the time and the energy that people have put into coming out tonight. And I think, um, you've seen some response to some of the requests that, uh, we heard tonight. So I appreciate, again, I appreciate everybody for being here and sticking with us.
And we certainly did review all the emails and all the comments.
That too.
Yeah. So, thank you for all the tremendous effort and that, that all worked into this decision.
So I, I would wanna second that, and I appreciated the opportunity to meet with everybody and very good comments tonight. And, uh, thank you for understanding how this process works.
Councilmember Monroe?
I'll, I'll second, third, all of, all of the above. Um, I actually had some questions. I wanted to see if I proposed a little bit of an amendment here, however. Um, I'm concerned about the overflow poke, parking, because I've heard both sides of that. I've heard we're concerned with one and we're, and, but we're also really concerned about the parking into the neighborhoods. So I would like to propose that we allow the overflow parking.
Okay.
Uh, in, because I, that, I think the preponderance of concern that I heard was, we're gonna get too many cars in our neighborhood. Um, so...
So...
Yeah. And, and, um, in terms of the 77 seats in the, in the, um, restaurant, um, I, I'd like, I'd like to do a plus minus there somehow. Um, because I'm imagining a restaurant that has 77 seats full, and then you have two extra people show up. I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but why don't we build that in? And then, you know, so 80, plus minus, you know, somehow a little bit of slop. That, yeah.
So there are two things. I'll quickly respond, and then I think staff is gonna have to do it. I think any number has the plus minus. So you don't take a number and then plus minus and then raise it up and then say plus minus. So I think there has got to be inherent that plus minus, and you bring up the child's seat or whatever. But, and with respect to the other one, and I'll, I'll tell you why I was thinking about the overflow parking. And I did talk with the, uh, Mr. Young about the, uh, whether he, as the one who's appealing the decision, what the preference is. And so therefore, I did what I said. But here's one way to think about it that I have, is that if we don't allow it now, we can fix it later. But if we do allow it now, fixing it later is another problem. So I, I'm inclined to, let's see what happens, and then I'm sure the neighborhood will let us know what they really want. So I, I would, made the motion, I think it's been seconded, so shall we go?
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? If you could please reread the, uh, the motion?
Your motion is that City Council will adopt a resolution denying appeal 19-001, upholding planning commission's approval of site plan and design review 19-004 and conditional use permit 19-006, subject to the conditions of approval with the three stated amendments, the elimination of the overflow parking, the replacement of any removed trees on site for the formula that was identified, and, um, and this, the adjustment of 77 seats in the restaurant, requiring a return to the planning commission, uh, for their review and approval.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Seem to have a saying, "Aye"?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously? Thank you very much. Certainly appreciate all your comments tonight. So that will give a few minutes to, uh, uh, clear the, uh, the folks. And then next we'll be considering matter 601, which is the appropriation of $240,000 from the Holm Street wall replacement phase, uh, ordered in context to grade tech. Okay, very good. Welcome back to round three of the Livermore City Council meeting for January 13th. Uh, we finished, uh, a discussion on 5.01, which was the proposed Wine Country Inn. Uh, and now we're moving on to matters for consideration, uh, which is 6.01, the resolution authorizing the appropriation of $240,000 from the Holm Street Wall Replacement Phase One project. Sherri Sheets is the one that's handling this.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Sherri Sheets, your city engineer. Tonight's staff is asking council to award contracts totaling approximately $634,000 to construct the Phase One Holm Street Decorative Wall Replacement Project. Phase One, uh, includes this section, these seven homes, and it includes work where we extend the, um, irrigation all the way from Concanon down to Hampton. Uh, we then install, uh, the decorative fence, hedges, and street trees along the first phase of the project. Um, it's approximately 600 linear foot, replaces 600 linear foot of masonry wall with an eight-foot tall redwood fence. And as I mentioned, uh, it has, includes the hedges along that fence as well as the street trees along that section. Phase Two of the project, what?
Nice logo.
Neil?
Like that purple.
Uh, sorry. Phase Two of the project, uh, is, okay. Okay. Phase Two of the project is the next nine, uh, property owners, and Phase Three is this final segment here. Um, Phase Two of the project is, uh, going out to bid this week, and, uh, it includes much more substantial retaining walls as part of it. We expect to award that, that, uh, project in March, and our outreach is continuing with that segment of the property owners. Phase Three is under design, and we're hoping to have final design in the spring of this year. Uh, the design of Phase One includes options for property owners with respect to providing proper grading and/or retaining walls. Two of the property owners have already constructed, uh, retaining walls on their sites. Several others are choosing to use the city's contractor to install a small wood retaining wall that's incorporated into the fence. Uh, this design option was developed as part of our ongoing coordination meetings with the residents, and, uh, the bid price came in at approximately a third of the cost of what it would take to do a freestanding, uh, wood retaining wall. Uh, property owners have the option of either prepaying to do that work, or, uh, they can opt into the city paying for the retaining wall and them accepting a 10-year lien, uh, against their property for the work. Uh, the lien accrues in interest at the secured overnight financing rate of, uh, whatever that is, plus 3%. Phase One is anticipated to be completed, completed by May. Phase Two, which includes the nine properties north of the Brewers, should be under construction in March and completed by July. And Phase Three is going to complete design, uh, in the spring of this year. The city has continued to experience deterioration of various walls. One particular situation is, uh, grape stake walls north of, uh, Holm Street, which are continuing to fail. Uh, the city has not replaced those fences as long as there's a private property fence, uh, separating it from the, uh, homes. Uh, staff is seeking council's direction tonight for the approval of $20,000, uh, to hire consultants to develop design guidelines for private fences along backing lots and at gateways to ensure a consistent look along those gateways. Uh, once those design guidelines have been developed and as we gain additional, uh, information from our outreach program, uh, staff will be coming back to council for further direction on the overall decorative wall policies. So, uh, that concludes staff's presentation, and we're available for questions.
Questions? Uh, I have no cards.
So at one point, um, I think I remember the last time this came up, there were still some folks that were unhappy. I just wondered, uh, have we had an opportunity of meeting with all of the homeowners, and you think we've reached some sort of, um, settlement with all of them?
So we've had continuous, um, continuing meetings with the various property owners. The Phase One property owners, um, I think with the incorporation of the integrated wall, the fence, uh, has satisfied them. Um, Phase Two, because there are much more substantial, uh, walls that need to be addressed, we're continuing discussions with them.
I see. Okay.
One concern I have with the, uh, the combined retaining wall and, uh, fence wall, uh, that's there, uh, is the potential for deterioration, because you've got, right now you've got the, uh, the retaining walls are separate. And, uh, so if the retaining wall starts to rot, well, this doesn't harm the fence. But my concern is, if they're connected and they're, they're an integral unit, that that, uh, degradation could, uh, prematurely, uh, cause the wall to fail.
Uh, yes. And so, uh, we have addressed that by designing the retaining wall to have a longer life than the actual fence material itself. So, uh, it should not, uh, cause a problem. Both the facilities, the retaining wall and the fence, become the property owners' as a part of this program either way.
Okay. Uh, one concern, there are two, um, sections of fence, grape stake fence, uh, east of Holmes, south of Anza. Uh, one of them is actually leaning up against the telephone pole, which is the only reason why it's not falling onto the sidewalk. Uh, and there's another one about eight doors down. And both of these have, uh, fences behind them, uh, but it looks like both of them are going down. Uh, this one, this is about a, one foot, uh, off-center, uh, and that's about eight doors south of the one that's leaning up against the telephone pole. So if we could maybe accelerate, uh, the replacement of those, or at least dropping them up so they don't fall?
So your staff, um, did evaluate that and did, uh, note that while they are certainly not, uh, long for this world, um, we wanted to make sure that we had clear council direction before we continued our pilot project of removing and not replacing fencing. And so with the hearing tonight and with direction from the council, we would be able to move forward, um, with removal of those fences in cases where there is an existing private fence adjacent to it.
Yeah. And of course, in this case, the private fence is also going down in those two cases. So if we could get out there and, and do something and, and keep those from, from collapsing.
So essentially, what our process would be, would be to remove the, the grape stake fence at that point. Um, we would not go onto private property and repair a private backyard fence at that point.
Okay. All right. Very good. Uh, Councilmember Monroe?
I'm just wondering what the lifespan, uh, you said that with the integrated, uh, retaining wall and fence had different lifespans. What is the lifespan?
So the fence is designed, should have a 20 to 25-year life, and the retaining wall should be about a 30 here.
Okay. Very good. Give her the questions. Okay, I have no comment cards. Uh, is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll move, we accept staff recommendation.
Moved by, uh, Vice Mayor Carling.
I'll second that.
Uh, seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously? Great. Thank you very much.
I would like to say thank you for, let's move this along. We've been working on this for a long time. And I also appreciate, um, the opportunity of looking, you know, north of Concanon, too. I think that's really important, because those, uh, grape stake fences north of, uh, Concanon Homes are pretty shabby looking, so. I appreciate you considering that as well and bringing that to our attention.
I was quite surprised when I learned that, that the city owns those. It's like, "How did that happen?" But, uh, but yeah, so I think we're gradually getting these things, uh, uh, straightened out. And, uh, when I first brought this up seven years ago, I was hoping that we'd have this done before I left office, and it looks like we may actually make that happen. Yeah, at least part of it. Um, okay, uh, 6.02, this is a discussion in the direction regarding the request, uh, that citizens for a, uh, Livermore Central Park have interest at hoteliers, submit proposals. Uh, I have, uh, 10 cards here. Uh, so this was a, uh, question that came up, uh, we've been hearing for about the last year and a half, uh, that there was, uh, a hotelier interested, another hotelier interested in bringing a hotel on, uh, the west side of, uh, South Livermore or the east side of South El, depending on how you look at it. Um, and, uh, I remember back in, uh, was it 2015? We issued requests for proposals, uh, for the, uh, Hotel in the Downtown. And, uh, to speak to, uh, Mr. Mann's point, uh, that we need to be sincere about whether we are actually submitting an RFP that we really wanna hear from somebody. Uh, and this is actually the second RFP that we put out, uh, for hotels. And I guess maybe I should sort of hand this off to staff here before I ramble on too much longer.
Sure. Thanks, uh, Mayor Marshawn. So, uh, back in the end of October, the council directed staff to prepare a letter, uh, inviting the, uh, members of the Citizens for, uh, Livermore Central Park and other groups, um, with, uh, similar membership, to, uh, submit or talk with and coordinate with hoteliers who are interested in developing a hotel on the west side of Livermore Avenue. That letter went out on November 4th, and it, uh, included an invitation to, uh, provide information that we would typically have with any sort of, uh, response or an entitlement application, including, uh, the hotelier and, uh, construction background and experience, the hotel type, brand size, number of rooms, the schedule, site plan, parking, those sort of aspects. And then the projections for financing, construction and infrastructure costs, and need for public subsidies. And, um, at this point, we have not received any responses, and so we're here tonight to, for your, for your discussion and direction.
Very good. All right. Questions for staff at this point? I do have, uh, about eight cards. You wanna take public comment first? Okay. Any questions for staff at this point? All right. Uh, we have, uh, Van Rainey, Lynn Sepala, Michael Frederick.
Mayor, city council, staff, um, I'll keep it simple. I mean, uh, you can talk to whoever you want to, but, uh, if, let's get it over with and get going. Um, let's, uh, start with the downtown plan, um, as envisioned, and let's build a hotel on the east side and forget about it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rainey. Uh, Lynn... Lynn Sepala, Michael Frederick, and Doug Mann.
Good evening, council, staff, citizens. I'm Lynn Sepala, a member of the Downtown Steering Committee, which plans an outreach program to inform citizens on the development plan and to gauge the public's opinion. Citizens showed a clear fondness for a west-side hotel on Railroad Avenue. The council opted for a hotel on the east side of Livermore Avenue, ignoring the public on this aspect, and granted Presidio exclusive negotiating right. Today, this hearing centers on whether a developer is available to build a west-side hotel, and whether finding one would cause years of delay. Critically, the council has willfully ignored one crucial fact. I attended a 2017 council meeting where Presidio's negotiating rights were up for renewal. The council heard argument for and against an east-side hotel. I saw the Presidio spoken to me, kind of concerned that because of the debate, they might lose their exclusive right. He dashed to the podium and assured the council of Presidio's willingness to cite the hotel anywhere the council chooses. So the city does have a bona fide developer to build a west-side hotel, and it is Presidio. Nevertheless, they penned a letter to me and friends of Livermore Committee members requesting a detailed plan for a west-side hotel, knowing full well that no self-respecting developer would respond unless and until Presidio backed out of the agreement, an very unlikely event in this case. I think this hearing is a red hearing. It is below the dignity of the council to participate in this charade. Is it possible that the sole purpose of this hearing is an inappropriate effort to cast doubt about the feasibility of West Side Hotel leading up to the March referendum? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sepala. Michael Frederick, Doug Mann, Jeff Caskey.
Hi, council mayor, staff. I'm reading this for William Dunlap, who could not be here tonight because of a family emergency. I, William Dunlap, did receive a letter in November asking me to quote "coordinate with a hotelier." I believe this is not the correct procedure for a city to establish a relationship with a new hotel developer. The city already has a relationship with Presidio, who stated at a public meeting in January 2018, they would be open to develop a hotel on the west side. The city staff has also communicated with a hotelier, hotel developer, who would apply under two conditions. One, Presidio would have to withdraw its interest in developing a hotel in the downtown Livermore. And two, the city would no longer be committed to the east-side hotel development. Neither of these conditions have been met, so no developer would apply under these circumstances. Thank you very much.
Doug Mann, Jeff Caskey, and Loretta Caskey.
Good evening again, council. Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, the way I run my business, and, you know, we're a video production company, and I'm thinking, okay, so if another video production company were in the process of doing a video for somebody, and then that same customer came to me and said, hey, you know, we started this thing with these guys, but what do you say, you know, we, you know, make a little plan with you? That wouldn't work. That wouldn't work with me. It's just ethically not right. And, you know, this is, this is a little bit bizarre, I think, to, you know, to do this. I, you know, the two previous speakers have made the point that Presidio said they'd build it on the other side of the street, and we know the results of the outreach. I, and, you know, as the earlier items, you know, I've already said it, I wasn't, I wasn't really joking that if you move it to the other side of the street, you get more rooms, you lighten up the need to maybe provide as many rooms for the, for the, you know, South Livermore Hotel, the Wine Country Hotel that they are planning. And if, if you move the hotel and the Wine Country Hotel goes in the same size that it is, well, then you get even more rooms, and that's okay. I mean, that's all good. And I think, as I say, I didn't hear you ask Jason, I would ask you to ask him again, do you have the option to reverse the development agreement with Presidio for the eastern location, eastern siding for the hotel? I know it's, it's going to the ballot, but I think you may be able to reverse it anyway, save us all from the ballot, save us all from the delay, and just move it and get it going. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mann. Jeff Caskey, Loretta Caskey, and Tamara Royce.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Jeff Caskey. As a recipient of one of the city letters and concurrently the target of a related city lawsuit, you might imagine that my belief in the reality of this offer was somewhat tempered. More to the point, however, there's no developer interested in bidding on a west-side hotel when the city has declared its intentions to continue with an east-side hotel, as represented by the development agreement with Presidio. At no point in the process have any of the letter writer, letter recipients seriously proposed the building of two hotels in the downtown catalyst area. So such an offer from the city couldn't be taken seriously. I assume you'll declare us unresponsive, and I heartily agree. When conditions change by the defeat of Measure P, we look forward to a similar, more rational invitation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caskey, Loretta Caskey, and Tamara Royce.
Good evening, council and staff. I am reading the response from Jean King, who was one of the letter recipients. So Jean King is stating, "I received the letter from staff member Paul Spence concerning downtown hotel request for proposal. Presidio had already stated at a January 2018 city council meeting that he would be open to developing a hotel on the west side of Livermore Ave. In addition, the hotel developer with whom I, Jean King, and a city staff member have talked with would be happy, as he always has been, to engage in a positive process that does not interfere with the current plans of the city. He has always said that he would apply to develop a top-quality hotel, 150 to 160 rooms, full service with a restaurant. If the city were committed to a west-side hotel location and Presidio was no longer interested because of these two conditions, because neither of these two requirements have been met so far, the talked-to hotel representative is not able to respond to the city at this time."
Thank you, Ms. Caskey. Tamara Royce.
Hi, and good evening. When I received the letter from the city requesting proposals for negotiations with a west-side hotel developer, I was very surprised. The city had already negotiated an agreement with Presidio to build a hotel on the east side of Livermore Avenue. The city has not shown any desire to build a hotel on the west side. So why this letter? No reasonable developer would waste time and resources responding to an insincere request such as this, knowing that the city has been working with another developer who has an agreement to build a hotel on the east side of Livermore Avenue. The letter was sent knowing that no responses would be forthcoming under the current circumstances. The city didn't follow a normal process for issuing a request for proposals, a further indication that the letter was politically motivated, to make it look as if the supporters of the Central Park Plan do not have a west-side hotel developer. Let me state yet again, and this is important, because everybody said it tonight, it is the truth. A hotel can be developed on the west side. Presidio indicated at a public meeting in January 2018 that it would be willing to develop a west-side hotel. A major hotel developer, whom members of our group and city staff have spoken with, has expressed interest in developing a high-level, full-service hotel with restaurant and 160 rooms on the west side. This developer has always said that he would not step up publicly unless he confirms that Presidio is not interested in developing on the west side, and the city council has decided to then build a hotel on the west side. The insincere letter from the city plainly did not meet these criteria and did not provide the developer with sufficient assurances to warrant a response at this time. Should the city be prepared to seriously contemplate a west-side hotel, and should Presidio decide it is not interested, this experienced, national developer has expressed interest in coming forward. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the city council. One of the things that was interesting was, for the last year and a half, we have heard from the members of the Central Park Committee that there is another developer that wants to bring in a hotel. And now, tonight, I'm hearing that that other developer is the same developer, Presidio. And that's not what we were told. We've been told for the last year and a half that there was another developer, other than Presidio, that wanted to bring this in. And the only thing they were waiting for was that the ENRA was no longer in effect. Well, the ENRA expired. And this was a sincere effort to see if anybody else was out there. Now, there, we heard throughout the, and it was referenced tonight about the outreach plan that we had, over 80% of the people that responded in the outreach believed that the hotel had to have an iconic presence on South Livermore Avenue. We heard that loud and clear. Either west-side or east-side, yes, but it had to be on South Livermore Avenue. And now we've heard comments that, well, there's a hotelier that wants to build east of El Street and south of Railroad. Well, that, that wasn't one of the considerations. But if somebody wants to do that, then let's, let's hear from them. But we keep hearing that there's another developer out there, and what we just heard is there isn't. And what I'm, I'm being offered tonight is that, oh, it's the same developer that you have, it's just that three years ago, at one point when he was asked the question, said that he might, but he was also asked, where would you prefer to build? And he preferred to build on the east side of South Livermore, on South Livermore, where over 80% of the respondents wanted the hotel. So I'm hearing some backpedaling here that, that, that you did have another developer, but now you really don't. It's the same developer that we already have, but that developer wants to build on the east side of South Livermore, and on South Livermore, where we heard most of the people Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, I just, I just find it remarkable, some of the comments. I mean, Mr. Caskey said there's no interest in a hotelier to bid on a west-side hotel. And then Ms. Royce says there is. And, and I've talked to the leadership of this group many, many times and asked, who, who is this hotelier? And they keep telling me, no, we can't tell you. It's secret. And so I think that was the whole point, was, okay, if you've really got somebody, how about identifying who they are? I mean, we ought to do due diligence. If they have a better plan, a better idea, I think it's incumbent upon us, as elected officials, to see whether or not it makes sense or not. And to suggest that this point, that Presidio would build on the west side is, is not relevant, we've decided, we have decided that the hotel's going to be on the east side. To, so, to suggest that we would even consider that at this point, I just think is remarkable. I, you know, I agree with Mr. Rainey. Let's get going, building on the east side.
Councilman Coomer.
I, I'm, after dealing with 5.01, I was really upset that this was even on the agenda, quite honestly. Because we made a decision, and if you all remember, and I know most of you do, I was the one, the only one who voted for a west-side hotel. But because of the way we run the city, this council majority made the decision to build it on the east side. And I'm good with that. And it got the ball rolling for everything else that has to happen there. And to consider now a west-side developer who has not been named, won't be named, and can't be named, where were they three years ago? You know, what, why is this all happening now? Considering that the entire look of what has been approved by the council over the last two years will have to be reconfigured in its entirety. And I'm just not willing to do that. We, I want to move ahead. We owe it to the business people. The wine industry here has been waiting to be put on the map by having a hotel where the wine growers can send their, the people come to, to enjoy our wineries and our wines. We need to get that going. It should have been in place 15, 15 years ago. However, here we are. We've made a decision. It wasn't, didn't work in my favor. I didn't cry over it. I went along, we went along and moved forward. The whole thing is to move forward. We want to get this going. The, the process worked. The process worked. And I always suggest to everybody that asks me, if you really want a referendum initiative, everything that comes up, where are you at budget time? Where are you and have to consider the really difficult tasks that we have to undertake looking at a several thousand-page budget? Nowhere. Our budget meetings are attended by one or two members of the public. And quite honestly, you know, unless you're willing to do that, shut up.
But what do you really think, Bob? Councilman Monroe?
So I heard three things from all the people who spoke. This developer, Presidio, said that he would build a west-side hotel, so why not? No one's going to come forward unless Presidio backs out, and we have someone, but that person won't come forward unless Presidio backs out, except Presidio's not backing out. And I believe we're going forward with this plan as it stands. And I wanted to follow up with what, what council member Coomer said. It's not just cost to the city, it's cost to the developer who has already spent two years, because already the hotel that was approved was referended and moved from four stories down to three. That costs time and money for the city, it costs time and money for the businesses in the area, it costs time and money to the developer. So the idea that there might be someone who would come forward if Presidio backs out simply means more time and money spent on everybody's part. And it, it affects not only, again, going forward, it affects city, it affects the businesses in the area, and it affects whoever the developer is, who is, again, Presidio. It also affects those things that we are not dealing with right now, because we're wasting our time dealing with this issue. I suggest we get on with it.
Well, I think one of the things that concerns me is the fact that the public is being deliberately misinformed. I mean, I'm seeing letters to the editor where they're saying, well, I read that there's another developer that wants to build the west-side hotel. So the public is being deliberately misinformed that there is someone else out there, and there isn't. And, and I, that's what I think troubles me the most, is people being deliberately misinformed, that this is dividing this community, when we had overwhelming support for a South Livermore Avenue hotel, and now this misinformation keeps being, being pushed out there to deceive this community and to continue to divide this community. And I, I find that very troubling, that we put together a process... And I find that very troubling, that we put together a process, we heard from thousands of residents, this other drawing that we're looking, that we're being foisted on the community, that was developed by two people. Two people put that together, as opposed to the thousands of people from which we heard to develop a plan that brought this community together. So this was the question that we wanted to have answered, is the community has been told that there's another developer out there, and what this answers is that no, there isn't. So let's put this to rest. Let's stop trying to deceive and divide the community. Put it to rest. There is no other developer. There's nobody else behind that curtain. Let's move ahead with this process and get this thing going.
Yeah, I'm sort of sympathetic to what I've already heard. I'd like to add, just what were we trying to do here? And the time we set this out, there was the claim that there was another hotelier. There was a claim that there was a better plan, and it was a better deal for the city. And I think there are ads out there saying, oh, it's going to bring so much more money to the city. All of that is just fabrication. That's all it is. And so the point was that there's a major decision before the citizens, and they need to be informed. And on one hand, we have a very detailed plan, analyzed, thoroughly understood, all of the financial implications, everything has been worked out. On the other side, we have a drawing, nothing more. We have a sketch of a footprint of a hotel drawn by an architect who's never built a hotel. Okay? That's all we've got, nothing. So the point of this letter was, we really owe it to the citizens. If there's going to be a claim that there's another viable plan, let's see it. But you've got nothing. And it's very important to understand, you know, I'm old enough to remember Tricky Dick and his secret plan to end the Vietnam War. How'd that work out? So that's what we have here. We don't have anything real on the other side. And because we don't have anything real on the other side, and it's been admitted quite clearly now, there is nothing, we cannot quantify the other plan. But we have heard rumors. What does this other hotelier want? He wants the land for free, I've heard. He wants to be relieved of the parking requirement, I've heard. He wants, he wants, and he wants. And all of that means he wants to take from us, the taxpayers. But how much does he want to take? Oh, we can't tell you because he doesn't exist, because he can't step up. It's ridiculous. So you've got nothing on the other side. There's nothing that we can quantify. And that's on purpose, because you have a fantasy that you're trying to suck people into in order to get your way. And I find that very bad. So if there were one out there, you're trying to keep the true facts hidden so that it can't be quantified because it actually costs more if you had it. Now, the other thing that I think heard loud and clear, there's also been the claim, oh, we can build it just as quick. Now, it's been flat-out obvious, you can't. Because you said, not until Presidio backs out, you've heard loud and clear, Presidio is not backing out. And he wouldn't, they wouldn't do that until sometime possibly post-November if there were a bunch of wrong-headed votes. So right there, you've just burned a year. So don't tell me that there's no delay. And finally, what I want to say is that this is all moot. Because of AB 1486, a hotel on the west side is no longer feasible. So, and we'll talk about that more later. But I agree with the suggestion that the council put this letter out. We wanted to know if there was something there. There is nothing there. So that's why you can have a fantasy that you can claim all kinds of ridiculous financials about. You can say it's a wonderful hotel. No hotelier would build it, because you have to have a qualified architect to design it. You don't. You don't even have that. So that's where I am on this. And so it's very clear, you've got nothing. I was all hot air.
Any further comments? I think we...
I think that's it.
I'm offended we wasted that much time on that.
Okay. Very good. Well, in that case, we will move on to 6.03. This is the resolution to submit applications to Plan Bay Area 2050. Priority, oh, yeah, so we need to vote to continue. Do you want to see how far we get through the agenda by 11:30? I think most of it's going to move fairly quickly. Okay. Do I get consensus to move to 11:30?
Yes.
Okay. We're rolling. Okay, 6.03, priority development areas and innovation and production areas.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Marchand, members of the city council. Yes, the item before you is a request to authorize staff to submit applications to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission to designate priority areas within the city as part of the Plan Bay Area 2050 planning process. Plan Bay Area is a long-term regional development and conservation strategy for the nine-county San Francisco Bay Area. The plan promotes compact land use development near transit and within existing communities to meet state and regional vehicle emission reduction goals as part of the Sustainable Communities Strategy. As part of the planning process, local jurisdictions are asked to self-select priority designation areas based on a set of designation criteria that helps the region, help to guide the region's growth and conservation. Plan Bay Area provides access to technical assistance as well as grant funding. The city has received over $4 million in funding for projects like Chestnut Square, Livermore Village infrastructure improvements, as well as the Iron Horse Trail under the program. Plan Bay Area does not override local land use authority or change zoning, however, just signals vision for either growth or conservation within a particular area from a regional lens. The city has existing priority designation areas. Priority development areas, or PDAs, are intended to support focused growth through mixed use and infill development near transit. Livermore currently has three PDAs, including downtown, the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan Area, and the east side priority development area. Priority conservation areas are intended to conserve open space, land for agriculture, habitat, watershed, and recreation. Livermore's PCAs include North Livermore, South Livermore, the Iron Horse Trail, and other key trail connections within the local trail network, including the Lost Colinas Overpass and parts of the Arroyo Los Pecidos Trail that improve access and promote multimodal transportation and also urban greening. As part of the Plan Bay Area 2050, Metropolitan Transportation Commission is proposing a new designation type, the Priority Production Area, or PPA. These areas are industrial areas that perform an essential function in manufacturing goods and other components as part of the supply chain of the local and regional economy. Staff is proposing to redesignate the east side PDA over here as a priority production area, because this area no longer meets the PDA criteria based on transit headways, and also because the original vision for the area more aligns with the priority production area criteria to create and expand a manufacturing and research development industries and include a more campus-like environment to capitalize on emerging technologies and close proximity to the national labs. In addition, staff recommends designating the Oaks Business Park over here on the west side of the city as a priority production area, because the area is intended to provide an environment for modern professional facilities, research institutions, and manufacturing operations. Staff is also proposing two new priority conservation areas, which are extremely hard to see on this map. The first is the segment of the Arroyo Los Pecidos Trail here, generally aligns behind Walmart and moves westward across North Livermore Avenue, and it's a crucial gap in completing that trail system. In addition, staff is proposing a segment of First Street from South Front Road to Inman in downtown to help facilitate active transportation improvements and other urban greening projects. Finally, staff is proposing to designate a new priority development area here on the south side of 580 around South Front Road. It aligns with a proposed concept plan for a Valley Link rail station in that area. So to reiterate, these designations would not change any local zoning, but would rather create a vision for these areas that would enable the city to receive future grant funding and also potentially technical assistance. And this is just part of a larger planning process for the regional plan. Staff anticipates commencing with a general plan update sometime in the next couple of years, which would give council and the community an opportunity to provide input on future developments within these areas. And participation in Plan Bay Area provides the city with an opportunity, again, for grant funding and technical assistance to help with that sort of planning effort. So staff is recommending city council adopt a resolution authorizing city staff to submit applications for Plan Bay Area 2050 to designate areas within the city of Livermore as the following priority designations. Future Valley Link, South Front Road Station Area as a new priority development area, Arroyo Los Pecidos Trail, and portions of First Street as a new priority conservation area for trail, bike lane, and urban green improvement, and the Oaks Business Park and eastern industrial area as priority production areas. And that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for any questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Questions for staff? Okay, do you have a card? Greg Scott?
In planning for the future, we're talking about 30 years from now, I'd like to strongly recommend that we think about maintaining a fair amount of our agricultural land. We are going to see quite a changed world in 30 years. It's, I hate to break it to you, but we're probably not going to be growing grapes. We don't have the water. You know, it's 275 gallons of water to produce a 750-milliliter bottle of wine. The World Economic Forum puts the fourth most critical thing in the world, the problem is water. We're going to have severe water problems. We're right now 7.7 billion people on the planet. 30 years will be around 10 billion. The demands on fresh water are going to be enormous, and the problem's already, we know from the gray satellites measuring gravitation that the 37 major aquifers in the world, 21 of them are in trouble, including the Central Valley Aquifer. We only have so much water. We have 30 million acre feet in California, and the distribution of that water is going to be more problematic too because of our changing climate. We are going to have a warming situation where we won't have as much banked snowfall. We won't have that distribution from the melting snow like we do now. On emissions, if we could even cut emissions 55% in the next 11, 12 years, we'll still see a post-industrial revolution increase in the planet temperature of 1.5 degrees Celsius. If we cut it only 25%, we're going to see a 2-degree Celsius rise by 2030. The difference, if you look at the modeling, the difference between the 1.5 Celsius degree change and the 2.0 Celsius degree change is enormous on all of our systems, especially agriculture. It's going to be much more difficult to grow food. We aren't looking at the way we're going of decreasing emissions. We're looking at a 40% increase. Your fancy model there at the lab on the Exoscale computer is looking at like, it's over a 3-degree Celsius change that the model's coming up with. So some of these changes and some of these things you're doing here, conservation areas, but I encourage you to save some agriculture land because I don't know how we're going to eat. By, in 30 years, we're going to need to produce 50 to 70% more food. We have that land. Let's not destroy it, and let's try to work it in the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I'm happy to say that Livermore does in fact have an urban growth boundary, something that's quite remarkable and contributes to our quality of life. And to change that urban growth boundary will take a vote of the people around here. So I don't envision the folks voting to move the urban growth boundary very easily. One of my concerns is that our governor wants to add 3.5 million new housing units, and I share your concern about finding new water for those housing units. However, I represent the city on the Regional Water Quality, Regional Water Task Force, and one of these that we're looking at is more efficient use of reclaimed wastewater, particularly for agriculture. Turns out that 85% of the water used in the state of California is for agriculture. So 10% savings on agriculture will increase the water for municipal and industrial use by 50%. So there's lots of room for efficiency, but I agree, we need to be very careful about our water resources. So at that, that's the last card that I have, so I'm going to bring it back to the council. Any questions or comments on the proposed priority designation areas for Plan 2050? Okay, do I have a motion?
Sure.
Move by Councilmember Monroe. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion? Oh, yes, comment?
I just really appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into this, putting this together, and the fact that this is moving towards the general plan. One of the things I love about Livermore, and particularly as I've come to understand how this city works, is the thought, is that thoughtfulness of how do we think about land use? How do we think about development? How do we think about conservation? And this is evidence of that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see, we've got one, two, three, four items left.
Do we call for the vote? We need a vote.
Yes, okay. Thanks for your comment. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passed unanimously? Oh, squirrel.
That was me.
All right, thank you. Okay, we've got one, two, three, four items left on the agenda. Think we can plow through it. Do you think that we can get through 6.04? Is that something you wanted to consider?
Yeah, I would like to do 6.04 because I need to report back to Stop Waste.
Oh, okay. In that case, we will do just that. Okay.
But I think the city attorney needs to say something.
So Mayor Marchand, at this point, we are past 11 o'clock. Your rules say you're not permitted to take up any new items after this time unless you take a formal vote of the city council. So I'd recommend you take a vote of which items you'd like to consider this evening, and we can proceed through the remainder of those. And if there's any you'd like to table or bring back next time, we can identify those as well.
Okay. So is there any items that we wish to table for consideration next time? Or do we want to power through? I think we can pass on 7.01. I think we can, unless somebody's really got a matter that they like to bring up. Is there anything that, anyone would like to have considered or move to next, the next meeting? Want to get everything done tonight?
Sure.
Okay. Do we need to vote on each one, or shall we just go all four?
I'd say just take one motion, say, consider the remainder. Considering the balance of your agenda except for item 7.01, if that's the motion, second and approved.
Okay. Okay, move by Councilmember Warner.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Carling. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. We're forging on ahead. Okay, on to 6.04. This is discussion direction on... This is discussion direction on policy related to regulating single-use disposables and packaging on food service ware. We have Marissa Gann, Judy Erlinson, and Scott Lanfair.
So, good evening. I'd like to introduce Marissa Gann. She's the city's recycling specialist. She'll be doing, presenting this item tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Marchand and members of the city council. At the November 25th city council meeting, council directed staff to prepare a report outlining options to discuss policy alternatives to address the use of single-use disposable food service ware and packaging, which includes items such as single-use plates, cups, bowls, straws, utensils, paper bags, paper liners, and condiment cups. These items present many challenges for local jurisdictions because they often end up as litter, create plastic pollution, and contaminate compost used to grow our crops. Stop Waste is considering options to regulate single-use disposables. The results of the city council's discussion tonight will be relayed to the Alameda County Waste Management Authority Board by Vice Mayor Carling at next week's board meeting. Stop Waste anticipates making a policy decision in fiscal year 2021 and expects implementation to happen in fiscal year 2122. Stop Waste proposes to be the lead agency on developing either a model ordinance to be customized by individual member agencies or a regional uniform ordinance that each agency may adopt. Under a model ordinance, you see, the city could adopt and customize its own ban on single-use disposables based on the model ordinance developed by Stop Waste. The advantages of a model ordinance are that it would allow the city the most flexibility to develop ordinance based on the city's policy objectives and local needs. City staff would be responsible for outreach and enforcement, and that enforcement may be combined with current and planned inspections by existing city staff. Stop Waste may provide some resources and limited implementation coordination. One of the big disadvantages of this option is the inconsistency across the county would lead to confusion among the public. Consumers won't, may not know what to expect based on the city that they're in, and it would be more difficult for businesses to comply. Under a regional ordinance, Stop Waste would develop an ordinance to be adopted and implemented by cities that do not currently have an existing foodware ordinance. The advantages of this approach would be Stop Waste would provide the majority of the outreach, implementation, and enforcement. It allows for more consistency countywide, and the county has industry partnerships, which may lead to economies of scale and efficiencies in outreach and implementation. The primary disadvantage of this approach is that it doesn't allow for flexibility to develop an ordinance based on the city's policy objectives and implementation and local needs. For both the model and regional ordinances, Stop Waste will oversee and produce an environmental impact report to assess any impacts under CEQA. In addition, Stop Waste will develop outreach and coordinate technical assistance for either a model or regional ordinance, but under a regional approach would not conduct enforcement without compensation from the city. Under either a model or regional ordinance, council may choose from a basic approach or a more comprehensive approach. And under the basic approach, it would include, number one, a ban on single-use disposables with a requirement to use reusable items at dine-in establishments only. Number two, require that single-use disposable accessories such as straws, utensils, and condiment cups are provided only on request or as self-service items at food vendor locations that are not dine-in only. And number three, require BPI certification for compostable fibers. And BPI, or Biodegradable Products Institute, certification will confirm any paper-based disposables will be successfully composted at an industrial compost facility. And a comprehensive approach would include those basic elements plus a charge for single-use cups and/or a charge for to-go food service ware, such as the containers and bags. The fees charged on these single-use disposables may be kept by the restaurants to help offset their initial startup costs. And the costs for these approaches vary depending on the policy requirements. Based on draft costs from Stop Waste, it's estimated that a model ordinance may cost a minimum of about $26,000 a year, which is the equivalent to about a quarter full-time staff person for the basic ordinance with complaint-based enforcement, or up to $140,000 annually for a comprehensive ordinance managed by a full-time employee for the comprehensive ordinance and inspection-based enforcement. A regional ordinance could cost Livermore an estimated $45,000 based on Stop Waste's costs or more depending on the policy elements included, and it would be provided to Stop Waste for their costs for outreach and enforcement in Livermore. This table shows some of the agencies that currently have an ordinance regulating single-use disposables in the Bay Area. The top four cities are in Alameda County, and they vary, as you can see, some, like Berkeley's is most stringent, and the other cities are more basic. This is just a high-level summary. Things are happening in the Bay Area currently. Staff recommends city council discuss policy alternatives for addressing the use of single-use disposable food service ware by Livermore food vendors and to provide feedback to the Waste Management Authority Board. Thank you, and staff is available for any questions.
Okay, Councilmember Warner, question?
I was looking at this, and I think we ought to move down this path, but I'm a little bit surprised that enforcement provided by city staff is a plus because I can't recall a briefing I've been in where staff has said, yeah, let's enforce something. So what I do hear, though, is if we go down this path and we get a regional ordinance, then we're going to have to pay somebody else some kind of overhead. Is that kind of the way to think about it? So my question is, why can't we have a regional ordinance that we enforce locally, and we don't have to pay the overhead?
Generally because there's economies of scale. Stop Waste is...
That sounds like diseconomies of scale. Somehow I missed it.
So Stop Waste is already doing inspections for things like the plastic bag ordinance, the mandatory recycling ordinance, so they would just tag that on. So if it were, if the decision was to go with a regional ordinance, it would be likely that there would be some economies gained by having an inspector in the field already.
So then how is it more expensive than if we did it locally?
More expensive than we did, if we did it locally, we would need more staffing.
No, what I'm saying is, you said there's economies of scale to doing it regionally, but it costs twice as much. It doesn't compute.
They're different programs. Essentially, the regional enforcement would be more of a full-time staff rather than a complaint-based enforcement. So in other words, you'll see the range on essentially the $26,000 a year up to $140,000 a year. We would be in the upper end of the range to get enforcement similar to the regional enforcement of 45.
Okay. I'm just trying to say, let's suppose I bought complaint-based regional ordinance, why does it cost me twice as much if there's economies of scale?
The regional approach wouldn't be complaint-based. They have a more comprehensive approach.
Well, it's listed here on the table, but it would be.
He's comparing the 45 to the 26.
I would go back to the table. It's right there. I'm looking at the 26 to the 45. You're telling me 46 is economies of scale and is twice as much. So I'm just asking, how does that, how do I make sense of that? And I understand it's nearly 11:30, but I'm not following it.
So the difference would be that we would be paying, first of all, these numbers are based on what Stop Waste has told us they think it will cost. This would be Livermore's share. So on the one, the model ordinance, city staff would be doing the enforcement. The regional ordinance, Stop Waste, would be doing enforcement. And based on the numbers that we've received from Stop Waste, that would be Livermore's proportionate share. Two different things.
I think that's a good point, and we may not solve it here tonight, but that's something I can take back to Stop Waste and make, and get some clarity on.
And certainly...
Because I know that enforcement, at least based on some conversations with some of the board members at Stop Waste when I was there last week, was enforcement was a big question mark for all the jurisdictions. And so let's not try and solve that tonight. I'll take it back.
So there's an acknowledgement that my question is not crazy?
I get it. Right. I get it.
Yes.
All right.
Just to follow that up, and the inspection-based one is the same. So there is something going on with...
Yeah, but I think what I'd like to know is, we sort of had three choices, right? We either do nothing, right? We could adopt, we could say, okay, we prefer model-based, or model ordinance, or regional. And I guess what I'd like to get a sense is what your preference at this point might be, recognizing that all of this is going to eventually come back to us in one form or another anyway, unless we decide not to do anything. And I think the other thing you have to understand is that much of this will be implemented over a period of time. We won't, we won't just jump into it all at once. They would implement certain things, for example, dine-in restaurants only to begin with, maybe, that kind of thing, before we go on to food trucks and fast food and things like that. So I think that's another thing we need to keep in mind. And again, I'm just trying to get a sense of where we are as a community represented by the five of us, so that I can take back and have a conversation with my colleagues on the board next week.
Okay, well, I have two cards, so we can get some comment from the public, and then we can bring it back and get their perspective, and then we can deliberate here. Two cards, Michael Frederick and Dawn Argula.
Yes, policy nerds, stay up late. I guess my question is, how is this going to affect wine reasons, specifically events at wineries where you bring in a caterer? It seems like if you cannot use disposable utensils, plates, you know, at an event like that, it could greatly increase the cost, and not to mention logistics. So I, just something to throw out there, and not real clear from the presentation how that would work. It looks like you're only looking at sit-in or take-out venues, but there's this whole wine industry here that may be greatly affected by such an ordinance. Thank you.
So here's, I mean, just to get some clarity, you're talking about like catered events, right?
Yeah, I can think of a lot of events at wineries where they don't really have food preparation, but they'll bring in...
Okay, good point.
A truck or whatever to do the job.
Thank you.
Dawn Argula.
Dawn Argula, CEO of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce. I would encourage you to make sure that you do outreach to our hospitality businesses in the community. I would expect that most of them want to do the right thing, however, that there will be economic impacts to their businesses to implement, and perhaps things like phasing or, you know, different types of approaches would be preferable. But definitely, I encourage you to reach out to them. We're happy to work with the city through the chamber, but then, you know, we want to make sure that we cover all the different types of businesses, dine-in, and fast food, and food trucks, and others, to help them move forward in whatever policy that you develop here. So please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, that's all the comments, the cards that I have, so I'll bring it back to the council for consideration. One of the, one of the issues that I've got, you know, basic approach, require reusable food service ware at dine-in establishments, which gets us right back to Mr. Scott's comments. Right now, you, if these are compostable, you can just compost all of that. If it's reusable food service ware, you got to wash it, which means you got to use water. And this is one of the things that, you know, with recycling now, you have to use water to wash the recyclables, and we pay deposits on a lot of these recyclables, and now we find out the recyclables are just going into the landfills anyway because nobody's taking them to recycle. So it, we're solving one problem and we're creating another. So that's, and it's, you know, where's the funding going to come from? And there's lots of places where we can put funding instead of in here. The use of compostable fibers, yeah, that's good. I can support that. The single-use straws and condiment cups on demand, sure, that's good. Charge for to-go food service ware, it's like when we finally had the law where you could take a bottle of wine with you, you didn't have to drink the whole thing at one sitting. So it encouraged people to not overindulge. And, you know, personally, I can't remember the last time that I was in a restaurant and I didn't bring something home. So to charge somebody versus thinking, well, gee, maybe I'll just eat all of it here, is encouraging over consumption, which is something that we don't want. So, you know, charging for single-use cups, again, going back to, yeah, we were going to get the deposits back, and now all the deposits are just turned into a tax, and it increases the cost to the consumer. Wow! That was, that's cold-blooded. Wow!
We could raise our hands.
Okay, well, I guess I'm done. Moving on.
Thanks for those comments. Does anybody else have anything to say?
Well, that's a first.
You know, when I was 15, where I grew up in Piedmont, I was part of a corporation at the time. We got a bunch of students together and a couple of daddies who were lawyers, and they wrote some articles in the corporation for the Piedmont Recycling and Environmental Education Project. What that meant is that every Saturday and Sunday, we went up there, long ago in 1969, '70, and smashed bottles, smashed cans, and took them all to the places that would buy the recycled material. It seemed like a good idea at the time. Well, it's, you know, obviously, there's challenges when everybody's doing it. And it brings us to the point we are now. Necessary, but how? And that's, that last question is at, like, 11:30 at night, on a Monday night, is a tough one for me to come to grips with, quite honestly. And I would love to hear more. I just, yeah, stuff has to happen, you know? So as I said, it's, well, you have to do something about it, you know? Run into, you know, run over plastic spoons and forks downtown all the time and things like that. It's like, just from an aesthetic point of view, but certainly we could do something with that. I don't know. Generate energy. Burn it all. I don't know what, you know?
I'd say of all the items on the agenda tonight, it's a long agenda, this was probably the one that gave me the most thought because it involves so many issues going forward. It made me think about the nature of the fast food industry and that, how would you even think about regulating that industry? Am I going to bring my stuff here? Phil, put my hamburger not in this container I bring you. At some point, after straws were, became a questionable thing, I was gifted with some reusable straw, the metal straws, and I carry them with me. I'm not quite sure how to clean them effectively. So, yeah, I don't know what you want from us. I mean, I, yes, I think outreach is a good idea. Yes, I think we should solve this problem. I don't have a clue how to go about doing it, and I don't know what, what can we tell you to bring to Stop Waste that's effective?
Well, just the conversation that we're having. I mean, John, for example, I think gave me a good, I think, for example, washing versus compostables. I think that's a good point. And I agree. I mean, you have to consider the water that you're using and versus, and not everything, despite the fact that I may say it's compostable, it turns out that isn't always true. I mean, I could ask these experts here at the table.
Definitely compostable.
Yeah, so, I mean, and I, it's more of a sense of, do you think we should do something?
Yes.
And is it worth having Stop Waste consider further about how we might move forward? I think one of the, to John's point again, what I'm getting a sense of, the cost of these charges for single-use cups or for to-go food is probably a bridge too far at this point. And so, you know, that's probably, I think, something that Stop Waste will hear, the staff will hear, that's probably, they will, that may be years down the road, but...
So let me, let me give a couple of suggestions then.
Sure.
I think in terms of outreach, having, having the larger conversation, so not only outreach to business owners, but outreach to students, outreach, you know, because they're the generation that's like, let's get this done. Outreach to those of us who go out to eat in various, you know? What happens if you go into a fast food place and say, how would you think about doing this? The other question is, in terms of water use, which does take more of what kind of energy? Does it take more energy to take paper products and... Does it take more energy to take paper products and compost them or to recycle them depending? Or does it, and of what kind? Or does it take, is it worse to use water? So I don't know the figures on that and I don't know that, having that information, I think, would be very useful in having the larger conversation. One more thing about the not charging, one of the things that I noticed Santa Cruz does is it's got the 25 credit for bring your own. How about doing a credit? That, you know, credit, not a charge.
Okay. I like that. And yet, there's compostable flatware now.
Yeah, but that's debatable about whether or not it's actually compost-
Well, some of it's bamboo and some of it's potato.
Yeah, I know, but even I've-
You mean, no one else carries a titanium spork?
Anyway, yeah.
Edible.
It doesn't always work the way they advertise.
So, real quick, do something, lean toward compostable, minimize water use, regional if they don't go off the deep end and charge us too much overhead.
Okay.
I'd be like the credit idea. I think that's, that's good.
And the credit, credit's good.
Good, okay. I think that's good. I'm good.
Got enough?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks, you guys.
6.05, okay. This is opportunity to say thanks. Good heavens. This, sometimes on a very short notice, the vice mayor has to stand when the mayor can't be somewhere and represents the city and at a lot of different events and functions. And with the Brown Act, I can only discuss an item coming before the council with one person, and that's the vice mayor. So I rely very heavily, you know, bouncing off ideas to the vice mayor. So I get a sense of, you know, is that kind of a stupid thing to say? And Dr. Carling will give me some great counsel. So I always appreciate bouncing ideas off of him and having the opportunity to have deeper conversations about things that are coming to the council. And I certainly appreciate times where all of a sudden, hey, I can't make this event, could the vice mayor be there to represent the city? And Dr. Carling has done a great job and I certainly appreciate it. And I'd like to present him with a plaque presented to Robert Carling, an appreciation of serving as vice mayor for the city of Livermore. So thank you ever so much greatly.
My pleasure. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
And with that, with that said, normally, we appoint the vice mayor in December, but we didn't have a meeting in December, trying to give the staff a chance to get caught up on stuff. And so here we are in January. By the way, at the next meeting, I'll be going over the appointments to the many, the 35 boards and commissions that we represent the city on. So take a look at yours. I'll send out an email to everyone with the current appointments and if something that you like and you want to stay there, let me know. If there's something else that you're interested in, we can talk about that as well. So as I come to appointing the next vice mayor, I met with Councilmember Coomer. We had a great conversation about the vice mayorship and I spoke with Councilmember Coomer and you've got other issues.
Well, yeah, you know what? With physical challenges increasing over the last year, I'm going to have to beg off on that because I just have to devote too much time over at Stanford and don't have the energy that you do.
Well, your top priority is to get well and to continue to serve this community in the very honorable management that you have. And I certainly appreciate, you are representing us on several boards and commissions and I certainly appreciate that, but your first priority is to get yourself well. So I appreciate that you're continuing to serve on the council, but recognizing that you don't want to commit to something that you can't necessarily fulfill. So with that, I would like to, we had a conversation about this and I'd like to ask Councilmember Bob Warner to step up to serve as the vice mayor. You served very capably two years ago and would look forward to serving with you as vice mayor again.
Okay.
Okay, very good. That, quick, on to 6.06 before he has a chance to change his mind. Okay, so staff sufficiently recorded that. Very good, thank you. That, moving on to 6.06, that is the specific wording here, discussion in direction regarding the preparation dissemination of factual information concerning the referendum against ordinance number 2089, approving the development agreement with the Wine Country Hotel at the Bankhead. So, we are in the middle of a, as I spoke a little bit earlier, there's a great deal of misinformation that's being disseminated out into the community, not the least of which is that there is another developer out there and we just established that there isn't. So with that, felt it was appropriate to bring this back and how do we prepare and disseminate the factual information so we can get the correct information out to the community and ensure that they do have the right information with which to make the decision for the upcoming election? Councilmember Warner?
Well, I agree with that. I think we have heard about the misinformation campaign and I think the question here is, to what extent are there facts out there that the public should know? I mean, you mentioned one that with respect to hotelier, but I think the key in my mind is what is this ordinance about and what is the affirming it mean? And I think it was mentioned before that this is about locking in the zoning and it allows us to move forward on the hotel. So I think that's, those are some of the salient points. I think, I don't know how to fold it in here, but we do have implications from new state law. And I think that AB 1486 in particular is important for people to know that it exists and that it has an impact. So I would request, to the extent that we can disseminate the facts on that, that we should.
So is that the part of the, our quarterly newsletters, the posted onto the website? We do have some cards tonight as well.
Okay. So I think, yeah, so I think what would be worth doing is what are the salient facts that the public should know? We had facts with respect to the initiative, but I don't think we ever talked about making sure people were properly informed so they could make a good decision.
Okay, well, with that, I do have some cards. On 6.06, we have Mary Ann Brent, Michael Frederick, Linda Melanase, and Jeff Caskey. Mary Ann Brent?
City council staff members at this late hour. I'm a supporter of the Central Park Plan and with your permission, I still want to address the issue of delay. So some city plan supporters have said that the Central Park Plan will cause a four-year delay and that statement is incorrect. Councilwoman Bob Warner, I believe you stated at a recent meeting that the Eastside Hotel would be able to begin construction in March or April of 2021. Why would it take so long? Is it because opening the I Street Garage must be completed first? A Westside Hotel does not need the opening of the I Street Garage before beginning construction. It can use surface parking within the site and adjacent to the site. Construction on a Westside Hotel could begin at about the same time as the Eastside Hotel unless the council blocked it. But I believe that if Livermore wants recognition as a great wine-producing area, it must look the part. What have other wine cities done? At the very least, they have secured resort-level hotels with restaurants and gardens or surrounding parkland, such as the Silverado Resort Hotel in Napa, the Fairmont Sonoma Mission Inn, the Hotel Hillsburg, and the Oberge de Soleil in Rutherford. A cramped mid-level hotel without a restaurant, without a full service, will not improve Livermore standing as a wine country destination or hotel worthy of Livermore's heritage. The city council must take action to support that goal by enabling citizens to vote for a better hotel on the west side of Livermore Avenue. It is not true that the Central Park Plan or Westside Hotel will cause delay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brent. Michael Frederick, Linda Melanase, Jeff Caskey.
I guess I should say Vice Mayor Warner, earlier on, made a statement that a Westside Hotel could not happen because of AB 1486. It just became law or effective on January 1st of this year, months after the Central Park Plan qualified for the ballot. It's not clear if the Surplus Land Act, which AB 1486 amended, has any impact on the downtown development or the ability of Livermore voters to decide on what that development might be. If it does, then, if it does block a Westside Hotel, then one would also thinks it blocks a, boy, sorry.
It's late.
Yeah, it's late. A black box theater and a science center and maybe Stockman's Park and maybe anything that isn't a non-housing component. Our, the Central Park Committee's council previously testified in front of the city council that it's clear that Article 4, Section 1 of the California Constitution protects our right as Livermore voters to adopt the Central Park Plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Frederick. Linda Melanase, Jeff Caskey, Loretta Caskey.
Mr. Coomer, I'm not going to shut up. This is, this needs to be said and it's factual information. I'm a member of the committee for the Central Park Plan and would like to add information on the financial benefit of our plan for Livermore. By voting down the hotel development agreement, that is voting no on P, citizens will be protecting the Central Park Plan. One of the important benefits of the plan is the millions of dollars that it will bring to the city's general fund. Central Park Plan supporters engaged Willdan Financial Services to conduct an independent study of the fiscal revenues that the plan would bring to the city's general fund compared to that of the city plan. The national firm was recommended by a financial consultant that the city has used. The study concludes that the Central Park Plan increases the general fund by a net of about 1.2 million annually or 35 million over 30 years. The study calculates that the Central Park Plan would bring in 506,000 more annually than does the city plan or 15.04 million more over 30 years. Why is that? The study looks at property taxes, sales taxes, and transient occupancy taxes, TOTs. Because our hotel has a restaurant and provides more amenities, it's classified as a higher level hotel than the city's hotel. It can therefore command higher room rates. In addition, our hotel has more rooms, 160 rooms versus the 135 at most at the city's hotel. For these reasons, the resulting property and TOT taxes coming from the Central Park Plan's hotel are significantly greater. The consultant also recognized that the Westside Hotel developer with whom he spoke would also pay the city for 75 parking spaces per night at an average cost of $7.50 per night. These spaces would only be used late at night, not interfering with the capacity of city parking at busy times. The Central Park Plan includes retail on the east side of Livermore Ave, where the city places its hotel. As a result, our plan provides more sales tax revenue from retail sales than does the city plan. So, when the consultant added up the property taxes, TOTs, paid parking fees, and sales taxes, the Central Park Plan provides over 500,000 more every year or 15.04 million over 30 years. An upper-level hotel would provide a face to the community and to our wineries, an image of quality. In addition, it would provide hard cash. Any extra costs the Central Park Plan might incur would be more than covered by the extra income it would generate, leaving the Willdan Financial Services Fiscal Impact Analysis with the city clerk.
Thank you. Jeff Caskey, Loretta Caskey, Tamara Royce.
I've been to your budget meetings. I've been to probably more council meetings than at least one of the council members here. How dare you tell any resident to shut up? I heard no reproach from anybody else on the council either. That's behavior beneath the citizens of Livermore.
Please speak to the item, Mr. Caskey.
Sorry, on topic.
Please speak to the item, Mr. Caskey.
I apologize, yes. So the, I heard earlier, let's see, we've decided that the hotel will be on the east side, but we should consider a westside hotel, that the hotelier is going to be Presidio, and in fact, that it was a waste of time to even consider the opportunity to look at a westside hotel. We've been back and forth on this. Let's see, we also heard that the important item in the outreach was that the hotel had to be on Livermore Avenue. But we also heard that in the outreach, a majority said that the hotel should be on the west side. Apparently, some of the things that we hear from the people are very important. Some of the things we hear from the people don't matter so much, so we can be forgiven for thinking that, when you listen, you only listen to the things that you agreed with. We heard that all kinds of characteristics about the developer that we've talked about, about what he wanted, what kind of a person he was, he was greedy, but then we also heard that he doesn't exist. So fact-finding should be easy. You seem to have many different sets to choose from. It was earlier mentioned that Article 4, Section 1 of the California Constitution protects our right as Livermore voters to adopt the Central Park Plan, so I just wanted to read that piece of the legislation because I think it's important that we hear. The legislative power of this state is vested in the California Legislature, which consists of the Senate and Assembly, but the people reserve to themselves the powers of initiative and referendum. It's important to note that the people reserve the power, not just the ability to sign an initiative, but the power of the words that those signatures support. So that's why I recommend voting no to preserve your power because the measure P will block the ability to have the people vote on the initiative effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caskey. Loretta Caskey, Lanning Thompson, Tamara Royce. Oh, you have two cards.
It was a mistake. I didn't hear my name, so I thought maybe you didn't get my name.
Okay, we had a few cards.
No problem. Just whenever you need me, I'll come up.
Once again, Jean King cannot be here tonight. She would like to relay this information to city and staff and good late evening. Parking is the number one priority from the community outreach. The city plan does not provide adequate parking to replace the parking that is lost by construction and- and is needed for new retail and business in the Livermore Avenue area of downtown. Construction of the East Side Hotel and the Stockman's Park and retail on the west side between Livermore Ave. and K Street takes away parking. According to the city's February 2018 map, over 300 spaces are lost from K Street to Livermore Ave. on the west side, and approximately 100 will be lost on the east side. 63 original plus the 37 on the north. One letter writer supporting the city plan has asserted that 775 parking spaces will be located close to the bankhead under the city plan. The figure of 775 spaces sounds very good, but that includes the 508 parking stalls in the present garage that cannot be counted to replace spaces lost or new demand. The approximately 265-stall new I Street Garage can be counted to replace some spaces, but it is also inadequate for replacement and new demand. Though the hotel is planning on private valet parking, hotel guests may choose to park closer in public parking rather than more remote valet service at K and Railroad. The Central Park Plan recognizes that more parking is needed in the area around Livermore Avenue and provides 244 more spaces in a structure on the east side of Livermore Avenue instead of the hotel. Traffic is always a concern. It has been estimated by a traffic consultant that the traffic caused by two trips for the East Side Hotel remote valet parking will be comparable to the traffic for the East Side public parking structure. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamara Royce, Lanning Thompson, Carl Winty.
Thank you, and sorry about that confusion. I did want to say to Councilman Comber that I, too, was taken aback by your remark and hurt by that, and I don't think it's worthy of the person I know you are, so I hope that we don't see that in the future. I wanted to talk a little bit about the housing and AB 1486. The Central Park Plan puts affordable housing on the edge of the main site, allowing for a large activated park, an open space that serves a legitimate public purpose, while also providing the required number of units to satisfy its prior agreements with the state. As Michael said a few minutes ago, AB 1486 amended the Surplus Lands Act, and those amendments only became law on January 1st, which was two weeks ago, and this was months after the Central Park Plan qualified for the ballot. So, we really don't know yet how that would impact the Central Park Plan, and I think it's very, it's premature to, without a lot more information to draw that conclusion. It is not clear what impact it will have on development in downtown Livermore, including the ability of Livermore voters to make development decisions such as where to place affordable housing. And as we've tried to emphasize, you know, the right to enact laws through the initiative process is a very unique and significant right that is held by the people. And, you know, we really feel that these rights have to be taken into account when anybody is looking at what is, what is the impact of an initiative on a law that was intended to apply to local agencies. So, these are considerations that I think are an important part of the facts that need to get out to the voters. If the city's plan were allowed to go forward, we would have 130 units of up to four-and-a-half story housing in the heart of our downtown area. If we adopt the Central Park Plan, we can have a showcase park that honors Livermore's historic commitment to open space, scenic corridors, and community character. Thank you.
Thank you. Lanning Thompson, Carl Winty.
Good late evening, what's left of it. The factual information about the development agreement with Presidio for the Bankhead Hotel must include information about the below-market-rate apartments that the city plans to construct in the area where the Central Park Plan supporters want to build their West Side Hotel. The cities for apartment buildings will include flats of various sizes to accommodate families with children. These apartments are intended for moderate-income families who have good, stable jobs in the Livermore area but can't afford to buy a home here. Note that these are regular rental apartments, not condos, which are privately owned, bought and sold, but some people call them, say that they're condos. They will be built by Eden Housing, a nonprofit affordable housing developer. There is a huge need for this type of family apartment housing. Very few apartments have been built here in the last 25 years, while rents on the already existing apartments were increasing exponentially. The Central Park Plan's 84 apartments are all tiny, one-bedroom units and can't accommodate more than two people. There are some 125 homeless children in our school district. If there were more family apartments, perhaps there wouldn't be so many kids without a real home. Additionally, if more members of our workforce can afford to live in our city, it reduces traffic on our freeways and resulting pollution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Carl Winty.
Almost morning. It might be morning by the time I get out. Mr. Mayor, council, as always, thank y'all for what you do. Those who put on a bulletproof vest to go to work and serve, appreciate it. Staff, awesome as always. There is a lot of confusion out there, and I am here to support preparation and dissemination of factual information concerning the referendum against ordinance 2089, right? We want the factual information, we want it out there. The timeline, cost, parking, housing, the relevant laws and the relevant law changes. I realize a struggle here is when you, people want a comparison. There's no Central Park Plan, right? There's an initiative, there's a Central Park Initiative that got to the ballot in November, and the vote of the people, as I understand it, by the Constitution, all the way through, the vote of the people is one of the most powerful things out there. Absolutely. There's also relevant law that says you are not just allowed to, but as I read it, maybe it just says allowed to, but I think it says you're obligated to continue to govern, right, in the unknown of what the future may hold. So, you're obligated to continue to govern in that light. So, we have a Central Park zoning initiative, and the main point of that zoning initiative is to basically prohibit a hotel from going right next to the bankhead. Okay, so now, we don't have anything to compare to, and this is what is confusing out there, and that dissemination of the information. You can only give information about a plan whereby you have the facts to get there, right, as opposed to saying we want a comparison, the timeline and otherwise. My generation, I have three cousins that live in town. I live just outside of town, and when talking to my generation, timeline, get her done. Second is cost and ongoing cost to our generation. So, I understand the challenges associated with dissemination of factual information regarding the initiative, because there's nothing to compare to. There is no Central Park Plan. There is a Central Park Initiative that is about zoning. So, will there be a delay? Seems reasonable there is. Is it a four-year thing? Is it a three-year thing? Is it a two-year thing? Is it a five-year thing? Is it an unknown thing with the unknown of AB 1486? So, we want to move forward. I appreciate the challenges you have. I just, once again, want to state that I fully support the dissemination of factual information. Thanks for what you do.
Thanks, Winty. Appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to close the comment period, bring it back to the council. Councilmember Warner. Excuse me, Vice Mayor Warner.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we have to lose your chair there or something, but the, I'm just astounded. And I think what we just heard is the reason why we've asked for factual information. I just heard an amazing amount of false information that's being promulgated by the group, and it's very disheartening, incredibly disheartening. This job is hard enough without having to listen to that nonsense. Let me start with a few questions for staff. Number one, have we not already said very explicitly that the hotel next to the bankhead does not require the I Street Garage? Have we said that?
Yes, that is true.
And along with that, not only have we said it, but have we actually counted the parking spaces as we build the project according to our plan? Have we done that?
Yes.
At any point, do the parking counts, when you build the plan, go negative compared to what we started with?
No, sir, they do not.
So, that's the example of what I'm talking about. Flat-out wrong, that the I Street Garage has to be built first, and I'll say this, that those who say otherwise, that the schedule could happen at the same time, those people have not shown how their drawing could be built and maintain the minimum amount of parking at every stage. They have never shown that. They have, that plan cannot be built the way they claim. One, ours can be. It's false to say that it can't be. Number two, does the L Street Garage have to be built before anything can be built in the northwest corner?
Yes.
Then that is to maintain the parking, and that is the fact, not what this nonsense that I heard. Number two, or three, or four, whatever, is the site contaminated on the west side in the northwest corner?
Yes, we have residual contamination.
So, in order, the other thing that I've heard out there, oh, we could start remediating it now. Is it possible to remediate the contamination in the northwest corner without eliminating the parking in the northwest corner?
No.
So, therefore, you can't even begin to remediate the contamination in the northwest corner without building the L Street Garage. Disseminating fact, you know, claims to the contrary are an absolute disservice to this community, and I request you stop. On the next thing, so, it's clear that you cannot maintain the parking and do the, put the, you know, it's just a drawing. You can't even begin to build the drawing, and no one has ever shown how it could be built in any rational staging that maintains the parking. You've never shown it. So, therefore, the one, the next thing is, from the time we were to build the L Street Garage, how long does it take to finish the L Street Garage?
The L Street Garage is a little over a year to complete.
L Street Garage? Because the, I thought it was like triple that.
Just for the L Street Garage itself?
So, in other words, you have to place that into its phasing order to essentially complete the other pieces of the puzzle before that. In addition, you have to complete, if you are building the L Street Garage as it is currently designed, that is one thing. The other question would be is, are you modifying the L Street Garage to be a different size?
Let me, clearly, the initiative cuts the current L Street Garage in half. I think that means a redesign.
If you are building a different L Street Garage, you do need to return to get both an entitlement-level approval, which...
So, there are a number of steps, but I believe it's three years.
Entitlemental review, environmental review of that, design drawings, all of that work has been completed for your current West Street, L Street Garage, and would need to be redone to redesign that and then ultimately re-entitle it, and then do the construction drawings necessary, and then after that, which is about two years' worth of steps in there, there's a year construction period.
Right, so three years. So, understand that. You can't build anything in the northwest corner until you build the L Street Garage. If you redesign the L Street Garage, it takes three years, okay? Very clear. You can say it to the, say the contrary, but what you're saying is not true. You can claim the earth is flat, that doesn't make it so. Now, the next thing is, let's get clear. When would we start to redesign the L Street Garage? We wouldn't start to redesign it until after the results of the initiative, which is that. Now, what else happens in there? We have an election. We have a new council. We have goals and priorities. We've got budgets. So, that means we wouldn't even begin to address the question until a year from now, then it would take, and then we have to decide what to do. It doesn't make any sense to cut it in half and immediately move it next to the bankhead, so we're going to debate that for a year. We've got a year from now, we've got maybe a year of debate, we've got three years of construction. Don't tell me that it can happen at the same time. It's just nonsense. So, the next, the next thing is, you know, I'll just leave it go at that, because I'm just flabbergasted that you guys can stand up here and just utter what is completely false. So, I'll come back, but I've got some more, but I'll just let it go.
Councilperson Carling?
So, I'll take a stab at the $15.04 million over 30 years, which I find rather remarkable. As a scientist, you've actually calculated this to four significant digits. It's quite, it's quite impressive. I, you know, it doesn't need a high-priced consult to figure, to just guess at some number. I mean, anybody in this audience can do this in your head with the TOT. If you know the TOT tax, you know what the cost of the room is, you take an occupancy rate, you multiply it times the number of years, you get any number you want. You can just make this stuff up. It's just a fantasy. We don't, you don't know any better than we do how successful a hotel is going to be. All we can do is rely on the hotelier that we have, that they want to build a 130-room hotel, not 160, not at an increased cost. And then you also, you also suggest that you can build a whole lot more retail space that's going to provide a sales tax to the city. Again, this is a fantasy. Look how long it took the retail space on the newish development in front of the bankhead on First Street to fill up. And look, we have empty stores, we have empty stores now, empty retail space now, today, on First Street. So, what is this fantasy that you're going to add many, many more square foot, square foot of retail space that our experts suggested that the city could support, and you're suggesting, like, double that? Again, this is just, it's just being made up. These are opinions, they're not facts. And I would also take offense to suggesting that we've only listened to things that we agreed with. You know, that's insulting to me, to suggest that that's the way we behave up here, because that's certainly not the way I've lived my life in terms of the career that I had or any other interaction with friends and colleagues and loved ones, and I certainly have not done that in my role as city council member.
Thank you. Thank you. Go for it.
Yeah, so, um, I wanted to really appreciate Carl Wentie, uh, who I think was the only speaker who actually spoke to the topic that we're supposed to be considering, which is, should the city, um, and, and Carl, for, for you, that's, that's remarkable, um, which is, should the city staff provide information on this topic? Um, I believe at all times, city staff should be communicating with the public. On this issue, which is so important to the, to, to the city, I would say that it's an unqualified yes. That's part of our responsibility, it's part of the responsibility of council to provide that information. If nothing else, if we do nothing else, making sure that the residents of this city are informed is really, really important. So, I, I would like, I, rather than leaving it at that, I have a specific piece of information I would like to ask, which is that, believe, Mr. Frederick, um, asked about fourteen eighty-six and was concerned that the, if the surplus land had an impact on one, why wouldn't it have an impact? And if you could clarify, uh, precisely what's, what impacts for fourteen eighty-six will and will not have with regard to downtown?
Um, I'll do my best to answer the question posed. Right now, A B fourteen eighty-six, as was mentioned previously, is an amendment to the state's requirements for the disposition of the city's surplus property. What that bill did is it amended our rules that we previously operated under. It added a new oversight through H C D and imposed new requirements as far as defining what is, um, agency use, what we're allowed to use property for.
Could you say what H C D is for?
Uh, Housing Community Development is a state agency. Uh, they're the agency that's also responsible for approving the city's, uh, housing element. So they have a great deal of authority and oversight over us, they've been asked to, um, oversee this process as well. It's uncertain what those new regulations will be, but they've been invited to create those regulations. With regard to this bill, it directs the city, as it has in the past, to prepare an inventory of its surplus property. Now, what has changed is the surplus property, you cannot use it for certain purposes such as, it's no longer an agency use to dispose of property for commercial or industrial uses or activities, including non-governmental retail, entertainment, or office development. You can't hold property for that purpose, um, you have to surplus it. Uh, property disposed for the sole purpose of investment or generation of revenue shall not be considered necessary for the agency's use. So we have a new ballgame as far as what we can do with the city's surplus property. That said, there are two, two primary exceptions in the new legislation. One exception exists for any agreements the city has currently entered into as of September thirtieth of last year, for the disposition of property. If the city had an agreement in place by that date, the legislation allows the city to continue through that disposition process, provided that disposition occurs prior to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So we have several agreements in dealing with the council's direction for the development of the downtown sites. We have E N R As with partners, we actually have, um, developed final agreements with the Eden Housing. We have a disposition, development agreement, and loan agreement for that particular use. With regard to the Black Box Theater and the Science and Society Center, the city has E N R As and is working its way to develop, development, disposition, development agreements. We can proceed down that process and complete that process as well. You also have a D D A in place with the commercial development on the Stockman's Park. Again, provided those contracts are followed through to completion and the property is disposed of by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, this legislation will not apply to those particular projects. Now, we also have a D D A and a D A, um, which is on the ballot for March third with the hotel developer, Presidio, for two-two, I think it's two-two-oh-five is their official name, Railroad Avenue, for the hotel site. That again, is an agreement that are predated September thirtieth of last year. So that, that is covered by an exemption for this current legislation. In addition, the hotel site was the subject of the former R D A's Long Range Property Management Plan. That Long Range Property Management Plan designated that particular site to be disposed of for future development. There's a second exception in this legislation that allows the city to pursue future development of that site consistent with the Long Range Property Management Plan, provided, again, one, there is an agreement with a developer prior to the conclusion of this year, prior to December thirty-first of twenty twenty. Well, you already have an agreement in place with a developer. Um, again, the same tail end is in place, which is that property has to be disposed of by twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. So those exceptions are why those projects are allowed to proceed under this legislation. The state learned its lessons when it did, from what occurred during the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies, that it needed to preserve those projects that were in the pipeline, allow them to complete that process.
One follow-up, what would happen should, um, the hotel fall out of contract?
It would all, it would depend on when it falls out of contract. So if it fell out of contract prior to the end of this year, the city would have an opportunity to enter into another agreement to see if it could preserve that exception. Failing that exception, it would then be transferred over to the city, the city would have to evaluate it as part of its surplus property inventory. And then if it was on that inventory, that list of, list of available properties gets sent to H C D at the state. It then has to be made available to certain agencies, and the legislation sets forth a waterfall of who has the opportunity or who we are required to offer that property to. Essentially, it is low-income housing developers, is the first priority, that's been evolving over the past few years, and includes, um, also development for transit-oriented development, T O D-type housing. We're closer to, that area is close to the transit station, so that would have to be another group that's, um, offered the opportunity to develop that parcel. It also offered it to school districts and park districts as well. If none of those partners stood up or expressed any interest in commenced negotiations with the city, then it would fall to the market. I hope that answers your question.
So I have a-
No, just, just, I'm going to be very quick about this one, because there's not much more I can add to, to what everybody else said, and it's too damn late to keep this going too much farther. Um, so it's, uh, you know, I, I've just, I believe that we have to make sure that factual information is disseminated to everybody, and that has to happen from the staff level, and, uh, cause we're not going to get it from the other side. So I, I want to make sure that we are on top of that and, uh, doing our best to correct any misstatements or, uh, intentional statements of facts perhaps, or, or not facts, or not plans, or whatever they are at this point, but, but I just want staff to be on top of this as much as they can, cause this is too important to get this going.
Just to, just to make a point here, uh, so as I've mentioned before, we've got a crisis in credit, of credibility, uh, that, uh, we're one speaker, and I'd say that, uh, the importance of the word, that the signature, that the signatories, uh, support, uh, where the signatures support, um, yeah, people signed, uh, a, a referendum with the promise that it was about a larger park. It's not about a larger park, it was about a development agreement with a hotel. The word park wasn't mentioned in the referendum, it was about a development agreement for a hotel. Yet, as was pointed out, the signature gatherers supported the concept of a park, but that's not what the referendum's about. It's about a development agreement with a hotel. Tonight, we heard all this information about this, uh, this financial report, the seven dollars and fifty cents per parking space and the, uh, all these millions of dollars over thirty years. Um, I didn't hear any mention about the, uh, the fact that the land was going to be given to this hotelier for free, uh, or that they were being absolved of the parking requirements. Um, I'd like to know where this information came from, because it's certain wasn't given to the city. We asked for that information, and that's, information did not come to the city, but yet for some reason, there's a select group that's privy to all of this information about a hotelier that is nameless, faceless, will not come to the city, will not present any information to the city, but yet somewhere, they're making all of these promises to somebody else, but, but not to the city when we made that request. Um, they're talking about this hotel like it's real. It's not. This hotel is not real, the hotelier is not real, the drawing is not real, uh, there's a soccer field on this drawing, uh, which is about one-twelfth the actual size. It's the same size as the Science Center, which is six thousand square feet. Supposed to be eighty thousand square feet. It's a fantasy. So we come back to what's going to be the most efficient and the most meaningful mechanism to get the facts out to the community? How do we do that?
And I, I think that we've got the, um, topics, and so I would request that the, staff has heard the topics and they can come back, um, can, come back to us next council meeting with the suggested facts around those topics, and then we, we go from there. I have a couple, one more topic or two. Uh, it's been insinuated, you know, waving the Constitution around and stuff like that, it's been insinuated that we're somehow violating the Constitution. So I'll ask the city attorney, are we violating the California State Constitution in what we're doing?
Not from the rhetoric that was mentioned here today at the, at the lectern, the council fulfilled its duties to set the matters for election and has complied with those obligations.
So, I, I'm just, I mean, what are you guys doing? Why are you doing that? And I know why you're doing it, actually, because you think you'll win that way, but I would request that you tell, be factual. Now, the other thing that, what is, and we've, we're going to have to deal with the interaction of fourteen eighty-six initiatives and things, but the point is, with the development agreement, and we're talking about the development agreement and the facts around the development agreement. So first of all, we entered into a development agreement, and we did not violate the Constitution. If you think so, sue us, see if you prevail, okay? We didn't, so don't say we did. So the, uh, so we're not violating the Constitution, and never would we do that. So the point is, it's settled, I mean, it's law, it's current law, at every right to enter into the development agreement, and that development agreement does not take away people's rights, because we're not doing anything in violation of the, of the Constitution. So I want to have a little bit of a conversation about that, but just, I mean, we, it's, it's just disgusting that we in this community are dealing with this kind of misinformation and that we even have to have this kind of meeting to say that we want the truth, the facts, to be out there. I'm, it's, it's just ridiculous. This, uh, we mentioned the, these fanciful financials, anybody, you know, garbage in, garbage out, anybody, I'm a financial analyst, I can put a model together that say, give you five hundred million, it has just as much validity. So there, there is no basis for this, and the other thing that might noted, there was nothing about the costs. It was talking about all these benefits, but there's no cost. And you always got a, you don't just talk about revenue in something, you also talk about costs and you get net income. So, just as another example in terms of the facts out there, this northwest corner has given, you know, we do the deal with the, uh, housing, that's worth nine million to the city. We've heard this fanciful hotelier wants the land for free, that's nine million. I didn't hear that in your financials, where's that? So, I, it, it is just unreasonable to be doing this, and I wish as a community, we could, we could stop this. So I think the staff has heard a bunch of topics, and if we could come back with the thoughts along that, we, we can make some progress.
If I may, I'd just like to, one, manage some expectations as far as what we can and can't do as far as dissemination of information. The city is prohibited from expending public money or resources on campaign materials, so that's clear in the law, we cannot do that. I mean, there's no bumper stickers, no billboards, no door-to-door canvassing, no mass media advertising. The city is not in a position we can disseminate information to the public, directing them to take a particular action on a measure. We can't disseminate information saying, "Vote no." We can't disseminate information saying, "Vote yes." You can take that position as a council, but we can't use public resources to send that out to the community. What can we do? As the city, you can expend resources to evaluate and provide information materials. You have to be, you can prepare objective, fact-based reports, you can distribute through the normal channels, such as you would, um, do for your, your mailers and things like that, you are able to do that, you can be able to post on your webpage. You need to be wary of campaign mailers and what that laws prohibits the city from doing as well. You can post on your website, you can make things available to the public. Um, you do need to be cautious of your tenor and the tone of your information materials, avoid rhetoric, avoid inflammatory language, avoid being argumentative. Think of this as Joe Friday, just the facts, man. Um, with that information, that's what the city can prepare and disseminate, and there's several cases that have provided guidance on that, Stanson versus Mott being the seminal case. More recently, Vargas versus City Salinas, and there's some other actions pending as far as the use of, uh, the F P P C's restriction on the use of on-air advertising, radio campaigns. I don't think that that's the council's direction right now, I think you're looking just for more factual information to be presented back to you. Staff can prepare that within that direction. I would request that you could help Mark out with his side of the shop, give him the direction of what you'd like to have information on.
So one item we heard, of course, was a summary of what was presented to you on fourteen eighty-six, um, the requirements of that particular item. Um, one of the other items, uh, that was referred to was information that the steering committee learned and was presented during the outreach process dealing on demand for, um, hotel rooms, demand for commercial, uh, and some of the other things that were foundational documents as we did studies, um, to determine how much of each of those would be absorbed by the market. Um, so that information is available, and we could bring that forward. Were there other particular items, um, that we are looking for?
Timing on construction. We're over timing on construction.
The big thing here, that's the misinformation that's being promulgated, is no delay, and the I Street Garage is a dependency and the L Street isn't. So being very clear on what is required and what is not required, and the extent to which the city's implementation plan maintains parking, right? That's a big deal here. You heard it, that was the lead-off item, was, so, no, I mean, let, let's have the facts with respect to that.
So we can present essentially information on parking at each phase, uh, from essentially before the beginning of the construction through each of the elements, uh, and completion of the city.
And, and, and how long it's going to take to build the, since the L Street Garage is a dependency of the northwest corner, how long is it going to take to do that?
I've learned, for example, uh, talking to community members, that some folks have even forgotten at this point that the railroad depot was moved and additional parking was created, that a couple of buildings near, um, Blacksmith Square and then the old strip mall by Domino's, and I think it, just reminding people that this was direction from us back two years ago, that we would never go below a certain level. I think if you could quantify, uh, during, on along a timeline here, is the pluses and minuses, um, and how we've never fallen below that, um, that, uh, minimum, because I think, I mean, sometimes people think that we don't live up to, um, what we say we're going to do, but this is a good example of where we've actually kept, um, kept a close eye on it, because that was the number one priority, so.
Well, it's like when we hear things like, oh, there's going to be, uh, less parking, you know, in, in the downtown, uh, with the caveat, oh, next to the bankhead. Uh, the city's approved downtown plan actually has more available parking, but what we're hearing is this, these very carefully crafted phrases that give the impression that, uh, of something that is not true. So that's, uh, um, you know, getting the information out, I think is going to be very important, and the best mechanisms to do that, the, the city attorney mentioned, uh, things that we can and we cannot do. Any further comments from, uh, from council? Do you want to just say ditto on six oh seven? Do you want to just say ditto on six oh seven? Or is there a seven, another, uh, comment thing you should make?
You do have comment cards if you are going to ultimately consider that item, um, you do have a public comment, or that item could be continued to a future council meeting.
Say ditto? Pardon me? Pardon me? Okay, continue? Okay, all right. So the council has, or the statute's sufficient direction for six point oh six?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so we wish to move ahead with six point oh seven? Oh, continue six oh seven to the next meeting, okay. I thought you said, I wasn't sure if you meant continue or continue it to the next meeting, that the-
Continue it to the next.
Can you, can you, continue it to the next meeting? Okay, all right. So in that, any further business coming to the council? I think we can do seven oh one next time. Okay, so we're going to, and so we're adjourning this to the next regular meeting, so notice here, we've given it the city council at its regular meeting of January thirteenth, adjourned and said meeting to an adjourned regular meeting to be held January twenty-seventh. Is that correct? It's a little bit different.
A regular city council meeting.
A little bit different, okay. Regular city council meeting to hold January twenty-seventh. With that, thank you very much for all your comments tonight, meeting adjourned. Oh, but, before that, I would like, yes, before, before that, I was ultimately shocked. I would like to adjourn this meeting in memory of Bob McKenzie, who served this community for, for decades, and last year I recognized Bob Madonna McKenzie's efforts at the Livermore Homeless Refuge. So, again, quite a shock that he has passed away, but I'd like to adjourn this meeting in his honor and his memory. Thank you. Adjourned.